Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, September 10th, the year 2002. City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. with minimal exceptions, and council meetings are open to the public. We invite you to join us and participate in local government. We can also be viewed live from home on your cable station, Channel 35. We can be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. We are just shy of a quorum at this time. It is about quarter after the hour, but this being Tuesday, as is customary, we do have both a salute to the flag and a moment of inspiration scheduled. At this point in time, I'd like to recognize our colleague from the 13th District, Council Member Garcetti, for introduction of our special guests.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, it's a joy for me to be able to introduce today Ernesto Ernie Medina, who is rector at the St. Paul Episcopal Cathedral at Echo Park and has been an incredible voice for justice in this city, somebody also who helped a lot recently when Jessica Cortez was abducted from the park and has worked a long time with us on the park in making it a cleaner and better place and inspiring us all. So today, he will be inspiring us further. Tomorrow, also, if I can plug this, what time are you guys doing it?
Five thirty.
At 5:30 at the Episcopal Cathedral, there will be a gathering and there will be a ringing of the bells to mark First Impact, the one-year anniversary of First Impact with the World Trade Center. And if any folks would like to come out very early in the morning, we certainly welcome you to Echo Park for that in CD1, Council Member Reyes's district. So, Mr. Medina.
Thank you for the privilege to be before you and to offer these words. This poem was written by Jim Koenig, our Director of Music at the Cathedral Center of St. Paul. He was in Europe on September 11th last and found himself in New York City in October, and this was his response. "The aching vibration in my brain, like a sustained pedal tone, moaning a deep lamentation, cannot outreach the event-inspired agony of this place, of crushed lives like flowers pressed between the pages of a history that should never have been written, but must be remembered again and again in hope of finding some legacy, some lesson to make sense of the senseless in this cathedral crater, where all five senses sing a hushed requiem of steel and concrete illusions, and we commune silently on salty tears, dust to dust. In another place across the cosmos, a hungry child eats a mash of dry moldy breadcrumbs. A faceless spurqua protects passersby from the depth of hopelessness in the dark eyes of its mother, who begs for the next nourishment. In her anguish portals, if her anguish portals had tears, they would blur the ink of Torah, Koran, and lifelines of good news, gospel promise. We could use some good news." Headline today, Palestinian Christian youth shot and killed in Manger Square. Exiting the church of the Nativity, carrying his young cousin, the teen suddenly slumped to the ancient stone pavement when a sniper's bullet pierced his heart. "In the Holy Land, tank tracks marked the way to Bethlehem, where shepherds full of angels' song came to see the sing which has come to pass. Sometimes one must be very quiet to hear angels sing. Its echo, too often fallen on deaf ears, is part plea, part promise. Peace on earth, a love-song request of love incarnate. Peace on earth, hope arrives in humble surroundings, the advent of an intervention that only seems too late. In other fields, the poppies grow as if they were actually enough opiates to dull the pain of it all. At Ground Zero, the flames are still burning. The work of being human goes on. I am not afraid. When you walk through the fire, you shall not be burned, and the flame shall not consume you. The workers look weary, firemen, police, volunteers. Among the curious are those who have come to pay respect and gasp a wordless prayer. I look at the ruins beyond the barricades and am reminded that there are many ways of hearing the angels sing. And when you do, we must sing along, be it in the stretch of time or in the intimacy of eternity. Last year, on September 11th, we awoke to find ourselves confronted with tragedy. May we awake tomorrow with the hope of love."
Thank you very much. I also have a presentation today, colleagues. We have with us today two individuals, Barry Amundson, whose brother Craig Amundson died at the Pentagon on September 11th of last year, and also Kelly Campbell, the brother-in-law of Craig, sorry, sister-in-law of Craig, excuse me, Kelly, and wife of Barry. They represent today many families of September 11th who have come together and who have started an organization called September 11th Families for Peaceful Tomorrows. They will be tonight at the First Baptist Church at 7:00, at 760 Southwest Moreland, having a forum called It's a Free Country, to commemorate what happened on September 11th and also speak about those great American values of peace, of justice, of civil liberties, and to try to make some sense, some lessons from what happened. Other folks that are included in this coalition that are doing this forum that we would like to honor as well today are Southern Californians, Southern California Chapter of Americans for Democratic Action, ACLU, Liberty Hill Foundation, and a variety of other groups and individuals. Eric Green, who's with us today from Southern California ACLU, Reverend Jim Lawson from the Interfaith Communities United for Peace and Justice, Susie Shannon, who is the Executive Director of the Southern California Chapter of Americans for Democratic Action, and Robert Greenwald and Adam Lowenstein from Robert Greenwald Productions. I thought it would be appropriate, they're leaving tomorrow or tonight, but I thought it would be appropriate to hear from family members who suffered the greatest loss and hear some lessons and moments of inspiration today as we give this also certificate of appreciation, which really embodies for this city that all of us mourn your loss, search for those same lessons that you are struggling with today, and that many of us stand beside you in making sure that those deaths were not in vain and that we learn those lessons. So I'd like to present this and then hear from one of you, please.
I want to say thank you to the council member and to the city of Los Angeles for inviting us here today. On September 11th last year, we lost Barry's younger brother Craig, who was 28 years old and the father of two young children. And it's been a very difficult year for our family, not only suffering this personal loss, but also knowing that Craig's death has been used to call for more war and to call for the deaths of other innocent people. We have joined with other families of September 11th victims who all have come together to say our grief is not a cry for war, that the last thing that we want as a result of our loss is for other families all over the world to experience this kind of loss and this kind of suffering. Several of us have traveled to Afghanistan in the past year and met with families there who have lost their loved ones due to errant bombs from our bombing campaign and are working to get some support to those families, to extend the compassion and the love that's been shown to the families of September 11th, to these forgotten victims whose stories aren't told and whose faces aren't seen. So if people come out tonight, you can see some of the video of some of our sister families in Afghanistan and hear what this year's been like for them. But I just want to close by saying that it's really been our hope that September 11th, 2002, can be used as a time to call for healing and a time to call for peace. And over the past year, we've seen a lot of commemorations in which our loss has been used to justify war and given the situation we're in right now, on the brink of yet another war that will cause suffering to other families and will undoubtedly fuel the fires of more terrorist attacks. I hope that we can all pause at this time tomorrow and think about how we build a better world in which no families go through what our family has been through. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. I believe we have now achieved a quorum. I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Burnson, Galanter, Garcetti, Gruel, Hahn, Holden, LaBonne, Schmiskowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Salina, Padilla, eleven members present in the quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Members, we have, as you know, a lengthy agenda this morning. This being Tuesday, as is customary, we also have a salute to the flag. We have one urgent agenda item to tend to, and we also have three additional presentations. Mr. Garcetti, do you wish to introduce our special guest to lead us in the salute to the flag?
Sure. It gives me a great pleasure to introduce Gil Garcetti. I believe he was our district attorney for a few years, and my father lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Members of the council, members of the public, please stand.
He's the man who first stopped me how to say this anyway, so it's fitting.
Please join me in renewing our allegiance to our great country. I pledge allegiance, the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. As I mentioned, members, we do have three additional presentations that we want to return to, but it did want to have us act on one urgent item, and that is to call forward Gil Garcetti as a commission nominee. The commission is optimistic and waiting his confirmation today, and the Ethics Commission is holding their meeting, expecting his arrival. Mr. Clerk, if we can take this matter up first. Public hearings have been held in committee. Motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearing. We do have a committed report recommending approval of Mr. Garcetti. Members wishing to be heard on this item, beginning with Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Mr. President, did you say that this matter requires a motion from the floor?
To reopen the public hearing.
Oh, okay. So we have a committee report on this.
A committee report recommends.
I misheard you. I just want to say to you, Mr. Garcetti, that I remember when I first met you as a law student, and I spent some time with you sitting up there in your office just across the street, and you told me what you wanted me to do and what you wanted other young lawyers to do. You wanted me to become a trial lawyer. You wanted me to seek justice, to try to do the right thing, and to learn how to become the most effective, aggressive, ethical advocate possible. And I've...
You've done it.
Well, I... Well, I don't know if I'm quite there yet, but I can't tell you how much it meant to me as a young, impressionable law student about to become a lawyer to have the chance to spend that time with you. And at that time in your career, you had already accomplished so much in this city. You had already set the standard for environmental prosecutions in this city, creating the concept of environmental prosecutions and creating the concept of public corruption investigations by the district attorney's office. It made a great impression on me a decade ago, and I, for one, am very grateful to you that you would decide at this time in your career, when you have so many things that you are doing, and I know you're about to embark upon a teaching career, that you would serve the people of the City of Los Angeles in this way. And it's a real honor to have you here today, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you for your comments, council member, and I'm glad where you are today. Keep it going. Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I remember, Mr. Garcetti, when I was a young police officer 30 years ago. I know your distinguished career in political life, as the district attorney of Los Angeles County, your tenacity, the effectiveness, and how this county had wonderful representation by you as the head of the Los Angeles County District Attorney's Office, and the hard work and the dedication you had for the many, many years. I remember our relationship when I was with the PPL Board and how there was that bridge and that support and the focus of protection. And I know on the Ethics Commission, you'll do the same to safeguard the public trust, the integrity, and I wish you well on that. Your son, my colleague, is a good friend, and we've worked extremely well together, and I'm sure he's very proud of his dad. I know when Eric was sworn in as council member, you were there, and it's interesting how the tide turns.
Indeed.
And you are taking that position. I know your love for photography, and I'm sure there'll be many cameras focused on you taking those pictures. So I wish you well in that endeavor and the best of luck.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Burnson.
You know, I don't often get up and speak on appointees to various commissions, except when they're exceptional. And I think this is an exceptional appointment, and I welcome it. I think it's important, I think Dennis only said half the equation, that protect the public interest, and that's obviously extremely important. But it's also important to have somebody there who's fair and realizes that when you deal with elected officials and their reputations, that that's something that's sacred and can't be restored.
Indeed.
This department and this commission has not always been so fair. I think some of us have recognized that through the years, and I think you're going to be a very important voice there. And I think that based upon the time that I've known you and your experience in law enforcement and what's right and wrong, that I'm delighted to have you agree to serve the city on this important commission.
Thank you for your confidence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. Mr. Holden.
Mr. Garcetti, how are you?
Very well, thank you. I've known you, Gil, for a number of years, and I want to tell you, I have faith in you, and I think that if I want to select a commission for you to serve on where you can have some integrity brought to that commission and commitment to be fair, I would recommend you for this commission. Let me just tell you this, Mr. Burnson just touched on it, but when you look at the record of that commission, it appears that they almost selectively, selectively go after minorities. When you look at the fine selectively, now, I'm sure that the staff has talked to the president of the council and other members who are in a position to make the appointment to say, "Appoint somebody who can work with us." That's what they do. But I tried to get my staff to bring a letter down here, which a person made a contribution to my campaign. They're supposed to go out and say, "Do you work here? Do you do this? Did you make the contribution?" No, they don't say that. They say, "Why did you contribute to Councilman Holden? None of your damn business." And when they go late at night, at 12 o'clock, climb over a locked gate, go knock on the door and harass a contributor, we have that in writing. They refuse to even accept that as a hearing. There's collusion, in my view, between the members of the commission, two of them at least, because one works for the other. The president, the chair of the committee, has another person who works for her as the executive director. That is not fair at all. And Mr. Burnson was saying about your reputation, that's all you have as an elected official. And when someone is accused of, which I have no control over because I'm not the treasurer, of receiving a $25 contribution, double contribution in excess, a $25, then it ends up in the newspaper, "Oh, he can be fined $5,000 for an event, a violation." There they are standing over there. But they intimidate you. They frighten you. So you can't say ethics, you can't say anything. But ethics sometimes is unethical, and there's a reason why I'm angry about it. The fact of the matter is, they need to get their act together. Everybody who's served in public office is not wrong because they're elected. And they don't make an effort to do things that are wrong. Fact of the matter is that that's the way they make it. When they talk about we do a 10% sampling of the entries into your file, you take a guy running for citywide office that may be 7,000 entries. You think they ever find them or anything? You think they ever look into their file? No.
Mr. Holden?
When you've got 700 entries and they come up with 11 problems, then they say, "This is $155,000 in violations," to tamper with your reputation. And that's all you have as an elected official. Am I mad about it? Yes. In my view, and I don't say this lightly, it's racist. And that's what it is, in my view. And I don't like it, and I never will. It's not just happened to me, it happened to others as well. But some of you are exempt from this kind of intimidation.
Mr. Holden?
I'll show you the letter, and I expect justice.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I just wanted to ask my former boss. I was going to ask him, how did you come about deciding to come back in public life? And what do you think is the best thing that you bring to the table? And for me, I really want you to highlight more what it means to actually have to go through the grind of an election, so.
Mr. Pacheco, I did not seek this position. I received a call from the council president offering me the position. I had never considered serving on the Ethics Commission. I had never applied for any commission in the city. I was staying away from government. When that call came, I immediately started thinking about it, that perhaps someone with my background and experience as a former prosecutor, someone who had been in charge of a division that prosecuted elected and public officials for various violations, that that would bring a slightly different perspective. And even more important, I think, was that the commission, I was told, had never had an elected official to sit on that commission. Well, I've been through three bruising campaigns. I think I can bring a fresh perspective and maybe some common sense, two deliberations, two reviews of cases. I'm not prejudging anything. I have a lot to learn. I know really nothing about the various city ordinances and regulations, but I will learn, and I will become, I think, somewhat of an expert in them.
Well, the only thing I'll tell you is that for both of us, our hair can't get any grayer going through the maze of Ethics Commission's regulations. But I tell you, that's going to be some light reading for you. I'm sure it will be something you get through considering your background. I just want to tell you, colleagues, that I can't speak for all of my former boss's decision, but I can speak of one. You made a good decision when you hired me, and thank you so much.
Ms. Schmiskowski.
Thank you. As a member of the committee, I was very, very honored to go through the process of discussion and make the recommendation that we have the council before us. Actually, I was going to pursue the same line of questioning that Mr. Pacheco did, and I agree with you, that I think that in the history of the Ethics Commission, not having had yet a former elected official, does create a very unique and special position. But I like the words that were used today in terms of fairness, justice, and common sense. I think those three together are going to be a rare quality brought to this board. And members, I would just like to compliment, actually, the original creators of the Ethics Commission, because we do have a unique situation here. Very often, and with all the other commission appointments and nominees that we will hear today, they were all made by the mayor. The Ethics Commission is the one unique commission that we have in our city, where the president of the council makes an appointment, the city attorney makes an appointment, the controller makes an appointment, and the mayor, as well as the president pro temp. So it brings a unique background of various individuals, and I think as a consequence, we have had that extra-special talent, different walks of life that people come from because they are chosen by different people in our system. So I think it speaks well to the system, it speaks well to the Ethics Commission itself, and I look very much forward to working with you and the commission as you bring forward not only the reviews on individual cases, but also the oversight and the overall recommendations of how we can improve that the perception, the reality, the tie and the confidence between the public that voted into office and the rules that govern us in a clear, transparent, obvious kind of way so that everyone feels better about it. So I'm very pleased to support you today, and also that you're another member of the 11th Council District coming forward to serve.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members, if you bear with me, I'd like to read this letter to the record from the B. Butler Enterprises, Inc. It says, "Dear Mr. Holden, I'm responding to your letter requesting information regarding the Los Angeles City Ethics Commission. Along with several members of my staff was questioned by Nile Seals regarding my contribution to your 1999 reelection campaign. Mr. Seals called my place of business numerous times. On one occasion, I spoke to Mr. Seals, who asked me if I had given money to my employees to give to your campaign. I informed him that I had not. On another occasion, Mr. Seals left questions to be answered with my administrative assistance. He wanted to know if the contribution was from my personal checking account or from my business account. And if it was from the business account, what percentage of the stock did I own and what percentage did my husband own in the company? Mr. Seals continued to harass me until I had made my attorney, Michael Bayless, contact him. Mr. Seals did speak with several of my employees either at their homes or at work. He spoke with Fanel Small, who told him that I had not given her money to contribute to Mr. Small, contribute. Mr. Small informed him that she had income from oil wells in Texas and that she did not need my money. Mr. Seals called Mary Schaffer five or six times at work. He asked Mr. Schaffer the same question, and she indicated that I had not given her any money to contribute to your campaign. Although Mr. Schaffer did, Ms. Schaffer did speak with Mr. Seals on one occasion, he continued to harass her. Mr. Seals also went to Ms. Schaffer's home and managed to get into a gated community after her granddaughter indicated to the security gate personnel that Ms. Schaffer was not at home at the time. Mr. Seals, accompanied by a woman, knocked on Ms. Schaffer's door to ask question, to question her. The telephone call continued thereafter on occasion. Mr. Seals also contacted Mr. Frank Suffer. Mr. Suffer indicated that Mr. Seals called him day and night. Mr. Seals asked Mr. Suffer, "Where did he get the money to contribute to the campaign?" Mr. Suffer informed him that it was his money and that he contributed to your campaign because he wanted to do so, and that he had been involved in political arenas for many years. Mr. Suffer also informed me that Mr. Seals advised him that he should contact a lawyer because of possible ethics violation and that he could be considered in contempt of the City Ethics Commission if he did not give him the information. Mr. Seals also indicated that you might be involved in a recall campaign and that there may be an investigation to the campaign of Margaret Lee Thomas as well. Mr. Seals insisted that I had contributed to your campaign through Ms. Suffer, and that if he contributes illegally, he would be held liable. Mr. Suffer continued, Mr. Seals as being, considered Mr. Seals as being threatening, harassing, argumentative, and unprofessional. Mr. Suffer then took a group of individuals down to meet with Mr. Seals regarding unethical practices by, I'm going to mention the other politician's name. Mr. Suffer was knowledgeable that the other politician committee had paid these individuals money to distribute flyers. Mr. Suffer informed Mr. Seals that this was the only unethical campaign practice of which he was aware. Mr. Harrison, the project manager at my facility, fielded several of the telephone calls from Mr. Seals to employees. Mr. Harrison inquired as to why he was calling, informing him that these people were under his supervision and that he needed to know why he was continually calling the facility. Mr. Seals refused to give him any information, even after Mr. Harrison suggested that he might be of some assistance.
Mr. Holden?
And that's what I've been going through.
Mr. Holden?
That's what actually happened, signed by the lady who wrote the letter. That ain't ethical.
Mr. Holden, I appreciate you raising general Ethics Commission concerns here. The matter before us is the confirmation of Mr. Garcetti.
Whoa, 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 wait. Mr. President, he's going to be a commissioner.
I understand.
This is a concern to him.
You've had your time. Thank you very much.
That's a different statement.
What's before us is the appointment of Mr. Garcetti to the Ethics Commission. I see no other members waiting to speak. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Congratulations. You're confirmed.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you all.
Let's end this matter forthwith, please. And return now, return now to presentations.
I wonder if I could ask the President, Michael Crump, the president of McBain Instruments, to come forward along with the LAPD hazmat team. Team members as follows: Officer Jonathan Hall, Officer Michael Hagan, Officer Michael Seiber, Officer Nellie Nava, Officer Christopher Watson, and also I'd ask that David Lemmendorf, who is from the University of California at Irvine and president of Safe Environment Engineering, if they would please come forward to the podium. And a cast of thousands. I wonder if Mr. Crump would please come forward in order to receive the... Members of the council, this is a certificate of appreciation and recognition of an outstanding example of how the private sector, private and public sector can work together. This is in recognition of the design of a rapid threat assessment kit called ARTAC. The dignitaries that are attending, you've already been introduced. The background is, with the help of the University of California Irvine School of Environmental Health and McBain Instruments, the LAPD Hazardous Materials and Environmental Crimes Unit developed the Rapid Threat Assessment Kit. ARTAC is designed to assist police officers when responding to bioterror threats. And what could be more timely than this presentation the day before the anniversary of one of the darkest days in our history related to terror? The kit involves a phase microscope assay and a series of chemical indicator tests. The LAPD will be able to use ARTAC to distinguish potentially dangerous substances from harmless ones by assessing the basic chemical and physical properties of the substances. ARTAC also reduces the number of samples that need to be sent to the laboratory for specific analysis. We want to highlight the success of public-private partnership again. By using ARTAC, the City of Los Angeles is now equipped with the necessary tools to be able to respond more efficiently to biological threats involving unknown powders and substances. So, members of the council, I think that all of us are probably a lot more aware and cognizant of the potential threats we have to our health, to our country, to our neighborhoods. And certainly, this is a great example of how the private and public sectors can work together to try to help us and keep us safe. So it's with great pleasure, I present this to you with my congratulations. And also, I want to take a special moment to commend our hazmat team. I think they're terrific. They do a great job for the city. Thank you all very much.
Ms. Schmiskowski.
Thank you. If I would like to just join in with Councilmember Burnson and really congratulate the Hazardous Materials and Environmental Crime Unit of LAPD, who has helped work with the private sector to develop this. We are probably not ever as much aware as we are today of the help and the assistance that you, as a first responder, come in and that you won, actually, in Sacramento. The Innovation and Technology Award at the 13th Annual Hazmat Workshop in Sacramento, I think, just is a... think just is a recognition from a national and state level of the work that your unit does, that LAPD does, again, looking for innovation, looking and working with the private sector. So let me congratulate all of you and let me thank you as representative today of just another one of the teams that provide professional excellence to the city, professional guarantee of public safety from all threats, all kinds of issues that affect our citizens day to day, and that you and the LAPD have developed this, have worked in that level. And there's Mr. Burnson holding up the award.
This is the award that they won. I just want everybody to see it, and I think it's a credit. They've recognized what we've always known here in Los Angeles, what a great unit they are.
Very good. Let me just add my congratulations and thank you too.
Now it's your turn.
Just briefly, I want to say thank you from McBain Instruments to the city of Los Angeles and the councilman Burnson. This project's been very exciting and we've been proud to work with the hazmat division of the LAPD. My company has a long history of working with the city and specifically with the Los Angeles Police Department. But this latest project is really seemed like a sense of higher purpose more than just a commercial gain. So I really just want to say thank you again. It's been an honor working with this group. I'm really proud and it's been an exciting project and I think again, as Councilman Burnson said, very timely. So thank you again for the citation.
Mr. Lavance.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council, Chief Davis and Commander Leep, all the officers there and this Councilman Burnson. I also want to make note on this commendation here, which is so special. These officers and all our officers work and they do a great job every day, but these officers go a little higher, a little stronger in the special unit to learn a little more about a very, very important subject about hazardous materials and how it affects our community. And I want to thank the officers for their career in seeking this position out and being qualified to take it and then working to heighten and raise the bar to have this awareness for hazardous materials because we do live in an area of ever-changing technology and materials and substance, and unless we know what's out there, we can't deal with it appropriately. So I want to just thank each and every one officer personally for their commitment to Los Angeles and the Los Angeles Police Department. Thank you.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. Thank you. I just, before you do, I, as representing the harbor area in Los Angeles and the port of Los Angeles, I particularly want to thank you and offer you on behalf of the residents of the harbor area, a tremendous debt of gratitude. We just commissioned the Coast Guard Maritime Safety and Security Team, which is going to be 100 Coast Guard personnel ready to respond in the case of emergency. But many of us who live in and around our port of Los Angeles feel like we are vulnerable on a daily basis in terms of what comes in and out of that harbor on a daily basis. So we feel grateful. We hope that you're able to respond quickly, particularly all the way down there, 26 miles away from downtown in the harbor area. But our residents, I know, are very grateful for your expertise and your readiness to respond to any kind of a hazard material disaster. So thank you.
Ms. Zine.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'd just like to -- oh, I'm sorry.
One more.
I guess one more, right?
One more comment from the council. I've seen the hazmat team. I've seen the equipment. I've seen that lady officer stuffed in the back of the car with all the equipment up at the academy. And I know with the current trend, more attention's being given, and I appreciate where we are today with that. But as far as the personnel, the dedication you have, the exposure to the chemicals, the environment, the negativity that you have to face every day, we need to provide you with the state-of-the-art equipment and not only a vehicle, but the other equipment. And I know that there's got to be some improvements in the vehicles you have. Your dedication obviously goes way beyond the public's idea and imagination. You folks are working in conditions and environment that needs to be improved, and this is a beginning, not an end. So I just want to lend my support and commend you on your dedication. I know Commander Leep is at the forefront, bringing requests forward, which we are going to proceed on, to make modifications and improve the working conditions for all the dedication you folks have. I know most of the public doesn't know they even exist as the hazmat within the LAPD, and I know the dedication you folks have. It does not go unnoticed by me and my colleagues, and now the public will know. We do appreciate it. Keep up the good work. And hopefully we'll get you a car. You don't have to be stuffed in the backseat with all the equipment because the day I saw it, it was unbelievable. With all the equipment, three officers, and they were crammed in that car, you take a sedan and put all this equipment in, it just doesn't work too well. Where we take care of the bomb squad and other entities within the police department, you are not going to be forgotten. That was a commitment a long time ago. We're going to continue with that and keep up the good work. Thank you very much. Chief, thank you.
Now it's your turn, Chief. Before anybody talks.
Real quick. Again, thank you very much. By the way, I appreciate you recognizing the fact that we are in need and acknowledging the fact that there will be some efforts to rectify that. So again, thank you. To the council, to the President, Mr. Councilman Burnson, thank you very much for recognizing what we already know is an outstanding unit within the Los Angeles Police Department, the hazmat unit. I think the comments that are said really captures my thoughts in that it really highlights a public and private partnership that really contributes to significant advances. This particular advance will, as stated, will allow us to identify things a lot quicker and hopefully increase officer safety as we deal with those chemicals in the field. But again, I want to thank you very much for the recognition. It's something that we really treasure and the whole department will, again, thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask all of you to come back. We'll take a picture with the entire group in back, okay? Follow me.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. Members of the council, let me remind all of you, we have a 98-item agenda, one item with which we have dispensed. We have two additional presentations. It is now just shy of 11:00 a.m. Chair recognizes next, Mr. Reyes for a presentation.
Thank you, Council President and colleagues. I know it's a long day, but I think it's worth the attention. And I thank you for your patience. But today, it's with great pleasure to welcome to our council chambers for the first time the new Director of Athletics at UCLA, Mr. Dan Guerrero. Joining Dan is his wife, Ann Marie, his parents, Esther and Jean, his sister Nancy, and his brother-in-law, Dan. As some of you know, Dan was appointed in late April, becoming only the eighth director in a wonderful line of succession at UCLA. And what's special about Dan, and I'm certain all of you will agree, is that as a new athletic director, he's also an alumni, class of '74. And not only is he an alumni, but he's also what we would call a local boy. Because as some of you may not know, he was born and raised in Wilmington. He also once worked as a field deputy for the city of Los Angeles for a council member by the name of John Gibson, who happened to be the one council member who's probably in the second-longest line of council president other than John Ferraro. Now personally, I think that in of itself should have been sufficient enough to have gained him his new job. But the fact is that Dan also has a great history of success wherever he has gone. And some of his accomplishments include, he was named 2001, 2002 Division, 1AA and 1AAA West Region CACDA Athletic Director of the Year. He was a 1999 Sports Fellow by the Institute for International Sports. He was widely credited as being the driving force behind a 38 million of newly constructed and renovated facilities at UC Irvine, including a newly renovated track and soccer complex, a construction of a 64-meter competitive swimming pool, extensive baseball stadium renovation, and the Ant Eater Recreation Center at UC Irvine. He's a strong advocate for academics. Dan started the Life Skills Program at UC Irvine, which has not since, which has since not failed to consistently produce academic All-Americans at that university. He was also instrumental in fostering two student referendums that helped provide funding for enhanced scholarship funding for all sports and the addition of women's water, polo, women's golf, and women's indoor track. In short, what we say is that Dan Guerrero is a winner. And he must be because that's all UCLA produces. I should also note that Dan during his UCLA days was also a member of the university's baseball team. But not only was he a member, but over the four years of his tenure there, he managed a .343 batting average and was inducted into the UCLA Baseball Hall of Fame. And he also played professional baseball in Italy. Members, I think we should feel quite fortunate to have Dan at the helm of this program, and not only for the reasons that I mentioned, but because I think it sends a wonderful message to Angelenos everywhere. And the message for me, and one of the main messages, is now we have a role model. When you look at the makeup of our city and you look at the exposure, the majority of the people who make up Los Angeles, we need the Dan Guerrero's to show our young people that you can get ahead, no matter what background you come from or what neighborhoods you grew up in, that you can achieve, and he is a great role model. And for me, I think it's only appropriate that he was recognized as the warrior in his baseball team, and as a warrior, he has been able to achieve all of this. So it's with great honor to recognize Dan and present him the certificate, but also acknowledge that today is Dan Guerrero Day in the City Valet. Dan?
Before we hear from him, before we hear from him, I know Councilmember Grul and Councilmember Hahn, we should say a few words.
Thank you. Well, as the other Bruin on the city council, Ed and I carry the flag here. I just want to let you know how proud we are to have you here today and have you in this wonderful new position. Although we've never had the chance to meet, I've heard wonderful things about you and want you to know that UCLA is a big part of this city. And not only for its athletics, but for the School of Public Policy and Education and the rest of the university that really serves as a resource for us here in the city of Los Angeles. So we welcome you in your new position, know that you are really part of the family anyway since you've grown up here and a Bruin yourself, but look forward to working with you, know that you have a supporter group of people here as you start your new endeavor, and that we're very proud of you and congratulations.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I just want to add a little bit more about Dan's history in our very own Wilmington community. He graduated from Banning High School, one of the greatest high schools in Los Angeles, and played shortstop and second base for the Banning High baseball team from 1967 to 1969. He earned all league honors each year that he played. And Dan has always been very respected at Banning High School and throughout the whole Wilmington community and the whole harbor area. In fact, just this past year, Dan's high school baseball jersey was retired, and it was the first ever to be retired by Banning High School. And also, besides being a great athlete, he really took the time to contribute to the community where you grew up. You were a member of the Wilmington Team Center and also a team post-summer work program leader in Wilmington. I want you to know that we're very proud of you in the harbor community, and you're a terrific role model for all the kids who are growing up in Wilmington right now as really something to achieve. Fortunately, I'm an alumni of Pepperdine University, which also has a very good baseball program. So when the waves play the Bruins, I don't know. But anyway, congratulations, and again, we're so proud of you in the community of Wilmington and throughout the whole harbor area.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hahn. Mr. Lavance.
Mr. President, members of council, Councilmember Ed Reyes, congratulations, Dan. It's wonderful to hear such a wonderful story that Ed told about you and your climb and Janus and the local touch. It's so important to Banning to have great people from our community stand up and take great positions. I'm so blessed to be in my position. I had a great mentor who sat up there, John Ferraro, who was a great Trojan, but I had another great mentor who was a Bruin in Milt Davis, who is a wonderful guy. He went to UCLA out of Jefferson High, and just as tremendous what the university does for young people, both men and women. And I think it's very important that you're paramount on keeping that level high for men and women's sports interscholastically. And I think I'd love to see the leadership of both you and USC bring all our colleges and universities together in the importance of athletics for men and women on the collegiate level and know anything we could do I certainly want to support. I know the rest of the members do. I just think it's wonderful that someone from our community steps up to the plate as a great All-Star from Banning High is now an All, and an All-Star for the UCLA Bruins is now the Athletic Director. It's such an important post, and good luck to the rest of the season with all the endeavors throughout the season, throughout the year. Congratulations, Dan.
Thank you, Councilman. President Padilla, members of the council, it brings me great pleasure to be here. I've been on the job for about two months, and probably the most frequently asked question of Dan Guerrero is, please tell us how you're going to run the program. Tell us about some of the core principles and foundations of your program. Very simply, I add that we will run a program with integrity. We will be committed, of course, to athletic excellence and academic achievement. We'll be committed to issues of diversity. We'll be committed to issues of public service and certainly issues of equity. But when they ask about how I manage the program, probably the best way to explain that is to tell a story of a young boy who simply loved baseball. About eight years old, at eight years, the age of eight years old, he received his first baseball bat and ball, took his father outside, wanted to play, threw the first ball up in the air, swung as hard as he could and missed. Strike one. Took the second ball up the air, swung, threw it up again, swang, missed again, strike two. Father said, "Son, if you miss again, it's strike three and you're out." "I know, Dad." Young boy threw the ball up in the air again, swung and missed, strike three. Father said, "Son, you struck out." Instead of feeling bad, however, the young boy was beaming. And the father said, "Why are you beaming?" He said, "Dad, I may not be a great hitter yet, but I sure am a great pitcher." And it's that optimism that I take to lead this program to what we feel is greater heights. And certainly, the opportunity to lead a program of the magnitude of UCLA is one that is incomprehensible in many ways for a young man from Wilmington, California. But I can very, I can remember very clearly many mentors there that taught me that if I worked hard, if I worked smart, if I took advantage of all the opportunities that were presented to me, that anything was possible. Despite all that optimism, I never thought that today could become a reality. I did spend time in council chambers here, working for Councilman Gibson. It seemed like another lifetime ago, but I can remember very vividly learning the importance of deliberation and participation, learning the skills of compromise, negotiation, building consensus. These are all things that I bring to the table to me now as the Athletic Director at UCLA. And more importantly, the ability to work with diverse constituencies, to understand that people see things through different filters, that they may not always see things the same way that you do. But nevertheless, you still need to work in accord. You still need to get results. You still need to get things done. I'm very proud to be an Angelino, very proud to have grown up in Wilmington. I always say it's the greatest community in the world for a young man to grow up in. I learned a lot from that community. Most importantly, I learned the importance of giving back because so many gave so much to me while I was there. And that's why I love UCLA. It's not just about being the steward of one of the most prestigious athletic programs in the country. It's about the mission of the University of California, which is teaching, research, and public service. Our university is a university that's committed to community service. They have very many, very many community initiatives. UCLA and LA for one. Of course, the athletics has "I'm Going to College" program and many other outreach programs. We're in fact very proud to represent this university. In conclusion, I'd just like to say I'm very proud to be here before you today, very blessed to have many joys in my life, wonderful family who are with me today. to have many joys in my life, wonderful family who are with me today, a great professional career, and of course, the opportunity to be raised in the greatest city in the world. I want to extend a special thanks to Councilman Ed Reyes, Councilwoman Janice Han, the other members of the council here for bestowing this great honor upon me. I'm truly grateful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. The chair recognizes Mr. LeBonde for a presentation. Mr. LeBonde passes. That concludes presentations for today's meeting. Mr. Clerk, first item, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Holden moves. Ms. Zakowski seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weiss moves, and Mr. Burnson seconds.
Mr. President, before starting the regular agenda, there's a few items to be continued and dealt with. Item number two, there's a request from Council District 15 to continue that matter till Friday, September 13th.
Members, request to continue item number two without objection, so ordered.
Item number eight, a request from the applicant in Council District One to continue that matter till October 9th.
Request to continue item number eight, also without objection.
Item number 18, a request from Councilmember Burnson to continue that matter till September 17th.
Okay, members, any objections to continuing item 18? Seeing none, that shall be continued. We did have one speaker card, excuse me, a couple of cards on item 18. Members of the public, please be advised that that matter is continued to September 17th.
And item number 30, a request to continue that matter by Mr. Ridley Thomas till October 11th.
Request to continue item number 30 by Mr. Ridley Thomas without objection.
Item number 79, the maker of the motion decides to receive and file that matter.
Item number 79, is there any objection to receiving and filing item 79? Seeing none, that shall be the order.
And item number 93, request to refer that matter back to ITGS Committee.
Without objection, item 93 is referred back to ITGS. Number 93?
Mr. President, that brings you back to item number 11 on a commission appointment. It's the appointment of Barry Glazer to the Los Angeles Convention Exposition Authority.
Okay, before actually proceeding, we do have a number of commission appointees today. Mr. Clerk, let's sift through the agenda and call matters special, and then we shall take the commission nominees before the items called special. We're not there yet, Mr. Burnson. Mr. Burnson, we're not there yet. Mr. Clerk, first set of items, please.
Items numbers one through 10, with the exception of eight that's already been acted on, are items noticed for public hearing.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to speak on these matters. We shall deem the public hearings open and closed. Members wishing to call any specials, items one through 10? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk. Let's, on items four through seven, deem the public hearings open and continue those matters to September 25th. For item number seven, to October 1st, on items four, five, and six, on the balance of the items, let's open the roll. Let's close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Those are approved.
Next items. Items number 16 through 36, with the exception of 18 that has been acted on, are items for which public hearings have been held.
Public hearings haven't been held on these items. Members wishing to call any specials, Mr. Holden?
Twenty and 35 continue for 30 days.
Nineteen and twenty continue as well?
No, no, no.
Nineteen and twenty called special by Mr. Holden.
And 35 continue for 30 days.
Thirty-five, any objections to continuing item number 35? Seeing none, item 35 shall be continued.
That would be October 11th.
Any other specials? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, on the balance of the items, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Those are approved. Forthwith, item 21, please. Next items.
Items numbers 38 through 92, with the exception of 79 that has been acted on, are items for which public hearings have not been held. There is a substitute motion that has been distributed on item number 77.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to address the counsel on these items. Shall deem the public hearing satisfied, members wishing to call any specials. Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, I'm sorry. The previous list of matters, item 21, I would like to move to reconsider for the sole purpose that one of the moving portions is redundant. It was already taken care of in a prior council motion, so recommendation number four on that matter is redundant. It's already been acted upon, so I just wanted to remove it from item 21.
If it's redundant, does it harm us to?
I don't know.
Approve it once again.
Mr. Clerk, does it require that we remove it, or is the redundancy allowed in government?
I think we allow it occasionally.
It's not efficient, but it's allowed.
All right. So there's no need to act on that? Mr. Clerk?
I don't believe so.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Items 38 through 92, any other specials, Mr. Weiss?
Number 80, please.
Eighty called special by Mr. Weiss. Mr. Garcetti?
Can we please receive and file number 70? And, we're not there yet. That's it right now. Thanks.
Any objections to receiving and filing item number 70? Seeing none, that shall be the order. Any other specials? Mr. Pacheco?
Asked to move item 51 for continuance for one week.
Any objection to continuing item 51? Seeing none, item 51 shall be continued. Any other specials? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Item number 93, it's an item for which public hearing has been held, and we have acted on that, never mind. Item number 94, it's closed session matters. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold that on the desk.
Items numbers 95 through 97 on the supplemental agenda are items for which public hearings have been held on item 97 and have not been held on 95 and 96.
I believe item 96 is called special by Mr. Burnson. On the balance of the items, public hearings haven't been held, a motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. We have items 95 and 97 before us. Members wishing to call either of those special. Ms. Gruel?
No, I needed to have item number 21 reconsidered. I apologize that we thought it was being called special, and I was out here and back with Mr.
Okay, let's take that in a second. 95 and 97 before us. Mr. Garcetti?
95 special, please.
95 called special by Mr. Garcetti. Item 97, anybody wishing to call item 97 special? Seeing none, let's open the roll, let's close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number 98 on the supplemental agenda.
Item 98 on the supplemental agenda is, a public hearing has been held on this matter, the Personnel Committee has heard it, Budget and Finance has waived the matter. Members wishing to call item 98 special? Seeing none, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Before returning to items called special, Mr. Clerk, there has been a motion to reconsider item number 21. It had been sent forthwith. I assume the file is still with us.
Yes, it is. You need to reconsider and suspend the rule.
Okay, let's suspend the forthwith, and please open the roll and reconsideration for item number 21. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, item 21 is reconsidered and called special by Ms. Gruel. Now.
Mr. President, I have 32 and 33 forthwith.
32 and 33 forthwith. Mr. Clerk, we have commission nominees waiting patiently, and we appreciate their patience. Let's return now to confirmation of commissioners.
Item number 11 is a matter for which public hearing has been held, is the appointment of Barry Glazer to the Los Angeles Convention Expedition Authority.
Thank you very much. Item 11 now before us, public hearing hasn't been held in committee. Members wishing to speak on this appointment, Mr. Garcetti?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I rise in strong support of Mr. Glazer's nomination. Came before committee yesterday. Councilmembers Perry and Pacheco, myself, were there. Obviously, there's a lot of work to cut out the Convention Center Board, but I think that what was shown yesterday is going to be a very dynamic board, I think, and I fully support Mr. Glazer's nomination, hope that folks will do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Congratulations, you were confirmed.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure.
Forthwith, please.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item number 12 is an item for which public hearing has not been held, the appointment of Daniel Germaine to the Disabled Access Appeals Commission.
Okay, and as he comes forward, once again, public hearing has been held in committee. Members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You were confirmed as well. Thank you for serving the city. Let's send this matter forthwith, please. Proceed to the next item.
Item number 13, commission appointment, the appointment of Mary Livano to the Environmental Affairs Commission.
And as she comes forward, once again, public hearing has been held in committee. Members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Congratulations to you as well.
Okay.
Have a lot of work to do. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Item number 14 is commission appointments, a reappointment of Matthew Guerreira goes to the Board of Information Technology Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning. Once again, members, consideration of this commission appointment has been held in committee. Members wishing to be heard, beginning with Mr. Zine.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Fine.
Good to see you.
Nice seeing you.
You got your hands full.
Thank you.
There's a major task at hand, as you know, with the information technology and the cable operations in Adelphia and renewals and all that, and we just looked for the commission to bring forth some peace and tranquility and customer service to be paramount. So, like I said, you got your hands full, you got a plate full of issues that have to be resolved.
I understand that, yes.
Yeah, you do understand that.
With five lawyers, yes, I understand.
So there'll be a little bit of common sense there to sort it out and make things happen. So I wish you well with it. I serve on that committee, and I know that with your abilities, solving those problems that can satisfy the public and their concerns about especially what's happening with that cable operation, bankruptcies, et cetera. So wish you well.
Thank you.
You well.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Item number 37 is the appointment of John Islas to the Board of Civil Service Commissioners. It's a reappointment.
Mr. Islas here? As he's coming forward. Public hearing has not been held on this appointment, but I do not have requests from members of the public to address the counsel on this item. We shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved.
Thank you, councilmembers.
Congratulations, and thank you for your service as well.
Thank you.
Forthwith, please. Next item.
First of the special called items is item number 19, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden? If I may ask you to press your button, please, on item 19?
Mr. President, members, we held this over from the last meeting in hopes that the Police Department, whoever is responsible for submitting this report, would be here to answer some questions and inform us as to the validity of the report and significance of it. So if they're here, will they just step up to the plate? They're not here? To the next meeting, Mr. President, they're not here.
Okay, department staff's not here. Is there any objection to continuing this matter?
One day, on the next meeting, which is Friday.
Next meeting is this Friday. Ms. Riedel will help us make sure the appropriate staff is here. Without objection, item 19. Does that go Friday, 20 as well, Mr. Holden?
20 is different. Maybe they're here for 20.
Item 19 without objection is continued till Friday. Item number 20 now before us, Mr. Holden?
Are you, somebody's here for Friday department response? Yes, same question, Mr. President, we should have that report as well.
Al Hernandez, Assistant Fire Marshal for the City of Los Angeles.
Yes. Are we talking about response time here? And establishing a standard, in the report, it says that you only respond about 5%, I mean, of the five minutes, about 40% responsive to the time that's required in response time. Could you tell us why that's the case?
I'm sorry, Councilman, I'm unprepared. I'm unprepared to answer that question. I'd come prepared to talk about the Fire Prevention Bureau Management Audit.
Of the time, of inspections?
Inspections, yes.
Go ahead, carry on.
The Controller's Office did a study of our inspection policies, made a determination that we were falling behind on some of our inspections, our annual inspections. What we did was we put in place some controls to ensure that those inspections would be caught up. They were caught up this year. All our inspections were met their appropriate inspection cycles. In addition to that, we have made recommendations and have included in our next year's budget proposal to put in place a new computerized management system so that that won't occur again, so that we don't fall behind again.
Well, maybe I'm a little confused here. Says in the report, it's reported to our auditor that the National Fire Protection Association is in the process of revising response time standards and is proposing to include three of the areas that the LA Fire Department is currently using, dispatch time, turnaround time, and response time. Now, am I looking at a different report or is that?
I think what's agendized is the management study for the Fire Prevention Bureau, which is a different one. The Controller's Office did about three or four different audits on the department.
Well, here's the one I'm looking at. The reason why it was a concern to me is because if you only, on target, 40% of the time, and the response time is, say, from the time you push the button, you leave, the time you go, leave, the time you arrive, which is about a five minutes total, you only on that target about 40% of the time.
Yeah.
That's what this report says. And you remember, we can cause ourselves a lot more lawsuits, we said, put a standard in place and don't adhere to it. For example, in my district, oh, I guess about six, seven years ago, there was a fire in a home, and they had bars on the windows, and about five or six people died. And the response time was so long, and the LA Fire Department getting there, that the county fire department came all the way from, remember that one?
Yes, sir.
From Slauson and Fairfax, and got to the scene long before their Los Angeles Fire Department did. They were debating whether or not it was in that jurisdiction, whether or not it's Fire Station X or Fire Station Y. And that cost the city taxpayers a lot of money. So this is very important. I mean, the term limit is going to say that you won't hear that story anymore. But I can tell you this, that this is where you put up a shut up. And if you're not here prepared to answer that, at some point in time, the council persons here are going to need to know. Not only that, to protect for the safety of their constituents, number one. Number two, you should give the answer. You should know where that is. Or somebody should be at the table who knows what it is.
I'm sure the staff, fire prevention, or not fire prevention, but rather department management staff has some information on that and should be prepared to brief you.
You do remember the fire, I'm telling you.
Yes, sir, I do.
And it's happened more than once in this city, which is a real tragedy. We have to get in step. All right, Mr. President, they're not giving us much information. I'm just trying to share what I know with members of the council and the public about what could happen unless we tighten the response time and adhere to it.
Mr. Zine?
Mr. President, colleagues, regarding the audit, I understand, I reviewed it. I think Councilmember Holden may have another audit report. My package doesn't contain that. I know there's a concern about response, but as I understand from this item, it's strictly on the audit on the inspections.
That's correct.
And there's been changes and modifications to address the problems, so that particular issue is resolved. I don't think you're here today to discuss the other issue that Councilmember Holden brought up, which is probably someone else. brought up, which is probably someone else who's been briefed on that, and I don't think you've been briefed on this particular subject, he brought it.
That's correct.
Okay. I didn't want to get, I want to get you off the hot seat since I think you're in the wrong seat for that issue.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, colleagues, and I hate to put you back in the hot seat, but the bottom line is, I remember as a staff person, we had issues about the deficiency in inspections. When can we find out what those deficiencies are and where? Do you have the ability to answer that question?
The type of inspections, it depends on the type of inspections, normally they're, the Fire Department has their normal field sources, resources, they go out, the local fire station does a certain class of inspections, they're responsible for doing about ninety thousand inspections. The Fire Prevention Bureau does a different caliber of inspections, it's limited to about ten thousand occupancies, and they, because of a specific criteria. Although my responsibility covers all of them, I have specific information on the ten thousand because those people work for me. There are other inspections that we do, such as brush, there's a hundred and twenty-three thousand brush inspection we do each year.
I know you could overwhelm me with figures and statistics, what I need to know is, where are the deficiencies? That's what I like to know. Back in early nineties, we had a series of deaths because of fire hazards, fire conditions in apartment buildings, that was nowhere in the radar with building safety and with the Fire Department. So, what's our progress? Where are we at? And what do we as a council have to do to work with the Fire Department, to make the necessary changes, to make it safe for everyone in every part of the city? But we need to know where the deficiencies are to begin with.
To target in your deficiencies for the City of Los Angeles, if you look at what our fire record is, they're primarily incendiary fires that we respond to. As it goes to fire prevention, where accidental fire occurs, the most likely place a fire will occur is at a home or residence, which is your house, your apartment building, where you reside.
So geographically in the city, can I get a map showing us where the deficiency and inspections are?
We targeted in specific areas and specific types of occupancies where we do more in-depth inspections or more periodic inspections of those occupancies, we can give you that information, yes.
So it's a yes?
Yes.
Okay, so I can look forward to getting a map that shows me where the deficiencies are at?
The map will take you sometime, me some time, but I can give you information.
Once you come to our office, show me what you have, and let's see what we can do, and see what the council needs to do to work together to cover these issues.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Brunson.
I wasn't going to, I wasn't going to talk, but being as Mr. Reyes raised a point, theoretically, we have a city ordinance that requires that all apartment buildings of over a certain number of units be inspected on an annual basis. Unfortunately, we're not adhering to that ordinance. First of all, the department doesn't have the resources, number one, and number two, they're doing the best they can on high-risk type buildings, is that, am I summarizing that correctly, just yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. So anyway, but it is a very important point that you raised, because the, although Mr. Holden was talking about response, we're talking about prevention here. And that's, that's the type of thing that the inspections are important for. So one of the challenges for this council in the future, I'm going to be leaving you very shortly, but a lot of you are going to have a challenge, because I've been kind of a spearhead on public safety, and one of the challenges you're going to have is to provide them with the resources to make all these buildings in Los Angeles safe. It's not an easy job, we have thousands and thousands of apartments, many of which are owned by slum lords and so forth, I think that's where they're concentrating their efforts most, on inspections, but even so, and I don't want to drag this out because we've got ninety-some items today, but get your report, then try to find a way to give them the resources and a plan to do to make these inspections as they're needed.
Thank you.
Mr. Holden.
President, members, a week ago or so, I call what is now known as item twenty special, and it dealt with response time. CLA gave us this report just yesterday, indicating that this is the issue that we'll be addressing today. Now, if it's incorrectly calendared on the, on the agenda, that's Mr. Zine, that's not something that Mr. Holden did. I think someone from CLA's office here is prepared to respond to this, nevertheless, Mr. President, members, this is a very critical issue. This report was before the committee was submitted, the early part of the year, and it talked about the discrepancies in the response time as it relates to the Police Department being called out for fires and also for paramedic program. And you're going to have to eventually address this issue anyway.
Councilman, Captain Wells from our staff, planning staff, is here, and he should be able to give you some information.
Why would you do that? I think it's good for, for all of us to know, here to know. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, thank you.
Captain Bill Wells with the Fire Department Planning Section, was there a specific question in regards to response times?
It talked about the fact that the response time, from the time you push the button, you're leaving the fire, call comes in, to the time you drive there, the time you say we've arrived is about five minutes. And that, the report says that you keep within this five-minute timeframe about forty percent of the time. That's what the report says. And we know that forty percent is not enough, in some cases, there've been some tragic loss of life because we were not even close to the five minutes. In fact, I gave as an example before you arrive, that in one particular case in my district, where you lost about five or six people right over there near Jefferson Boulevard, and the county had to come all the way from the county area, the unincorporated area, to fight the fire because LAPD, LA Fire Department was deciding which jurisdiction it was, whether it was Station X or Station Y. And have we improved on that? I think it's important to note this issue for, for the public's concern, so that they feel that they are being protected with paramedics and also in case of fire. Tell me, how are you going to improve on that forty percent of the time?
Very good. As far as response times, yes, we are improving. Each year, we put in more resources, more ambulances, and we're planning on building some replacement fire stations that can hold even more resources of fire engines and ambulances. Right now, citywide, we do have an average response time of less than five minutes.
Mr. President, we lost about a minute and a half, but carry on anyway. Thank you very much, go ahead.
We are meeting most of our goals in regards to getting our first unit on scene in five minutes or less, as an average, our citywide average is five point one minutes. So there are some locations that are closer to fire stations where we get on scene a lot quicker, and there are some a little bit longer, the ones that are more distant from the fire station. As a percentage, for our paramedic units, getting our paramedics on scene, that has continued to improve as we have a paramedic in just about every fire station now, except for a couple, and those will be filled out later this year with this year's budget. But we are able to get our first paramedic unit on scene, citywide, seventy-nine percent of the time, under the guidelines that we have as our goal, and which are also the national goals. So we continue to improve as we put out more resources, as we build our new stations with the Proposition F money, we'll be able to put more resources into those stations so we can continue to decrease our response times.
Mr. President, in closing, just, I think last election, there was an item put in the ballot for the Fire Department and for animals, you know? And because the animals associated with, animal regs associated with the Fire Department's issue, it was approved. And that's been some time now, you've improved some of the stations, yes, but you have a profile, or you should have one, where the stations are located, and take the farthest point in which they have jurisdiction for fighting fires or providing service to a general area, and be able to decide what, what response time will be required if, in the event, those circumstances should, you be faced with them, okay? That's number one. And number two is that, I want to say you, Fire Department is good, is doing a good job, this is not to criticize you at all, but to alert you that certain citizens in the City of LA are concerned about response time, and as we speak today, are using response time as an argument for saying, we're not getting the services. Even though we voted for the issue, and we voted the tax assets, we're not getting the services. So, it is something that we should, we should heighten our interest, concern, and address as a priority issue. And so that's why I raised the issue, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Holden, seeing no other members wishing to be heard at this time. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number twenty-one, as reconsidered by Councilmember Gruel.
Mr. Gruel.
If I could, what I'd like to do is, just on attachment A, there is account number S-240, I'd like to have it separated and have it a separate item, continued for two weeks. So everything else to move ahead and separate that particular item.
Is there any objection to that?
The city clerk did a look to face it.
What recommendation is that?
This is the attachment A.
Oh, okay, that's why I don't have it. Without objection, and Mr. Pacheco?
Recommendation number one, right?
He's fine with it, aren't you?
Mr. Pacheco, is item twenty-one as reconsidered? You had mentioned a redundancy in the report earlier in the meeting?
Item number four of the moving section regarding the Italian Hall was satisfied under an independent motion, so we might as well remove that now. Just my own matter, I'm sorry. And I have no objections to Ms. Gruel's request.
We'll delete that section of the report, and continue the item as requested by Ms. Gruel. On the balance of the report, let's reopen the roll. Let's close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Let's send that forthwith, that is approved. Next item, please.
Item number ninety-five, called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti, item number ninety-
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I went out of order, item number eighty, called special by Councilmember Weiss.
Mr. Weiss. Item eighty?
Item eighty? Eighty. Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I called item eighty special briefly, just to let you know about it, because I'm very proud of it, it's a real success. In my district, in my, in my offices, we have what we call the Schoolmates Program, where we partner with the local public schools in our district to find out what we, at the City of LA level, can do to make the envelope around the school better. And we proactively reach out to each of them, and one thing we did here is, we have helped the Wonderland Avenue School up in Laurel Canyon, just across the street from your district, Mr. Labonge, or across the canyon, I should say, come up with a way to pick up and drop off its kids in a safe manner. There had been plans on the board for years and years to do literally four hundred thousand dollars worth of work to come up with this one simple drop-off and pickup lane. Up there in the canyons, it's, it's very dangerous when it comes to driving on a good day, and when you're talking about people dropping off their kids, double parking kids, racing across the street, it rapidly becomes very dangerous. And so, for twenty-three thousand dollars instead of four hundred thousand dollars, my office came up with a plan, which has been implemented, so that the kids who attend Wonderland Avenue School are going to be dropped off and picked up from school on a daily basis safely. It's a small thing that we're doing better in this city than we've done ever before, and I'm very proud of my office, very proud of my staff and the work that everyone's done in support of our Schoolmates Program. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss, I believe Mr. Labonge also has a successful effort.
Yeah, no, Mr. President, members of council, Mr. Brunson, because of your leadership in transportation, and always thinking outside the box, in our particular school, and Jack, I want to thank you for your leadership there, and I want to learn a little more about it as well. At our neighborhood school, Ivanhoe, where a child was hit walking behind a car as another car backed up there, we had a meeting on the block, and we found out that the entrance to the school is so close to the main intersection that it all colliders there. And a Los Angeles Times editor, whose daughter goes to school there, overheard us talking and joined in the conversation, and contributed the idea that you move the gate from the corner location up to the, away from the intersection. And as old traffic officer, as you were, Councilman Zine, you'd know it, the congestion then was moved to the mid-block, which eases the unloading and offloading of the time to the school. So it's so important, because you know when you smoke, Jack, I don't know if there's been a fatality, and God, I hope there hasn't been at any of our schools this school year, but the chances are, it's always tough because of the high amount of cars. But let's make it a goal to look at all of our schools, how we could work with the LA Unified and private schools and parochial schools, to help in the situation around the impacts of traffic. So I just want to thank you for your leadership on that there, and also, Mr. Brunson, for all your leadership on transportation issues and traffic safety. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on item eighty. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Mr. Reyes.
I'd like to ask if we could reconsider item fifty-one and continue item fifty-seven. We do need to act on fifty-one, and it's fifty-seven that we need to continue.
Okay, fifty-one had been previously continued, and fifty-seven had been previously voted upon.
Right, we need to flip it.
So, let's open the roll on reconsideration of item fifty-one. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Fifty-one, previously, previously continued is now before us. Mr. Reyes moves approval of the matter. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. We have now a request for reconsideration of item fifty-seven. Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is reconsidered, and a request by Mr. Reyes to continue. Mr. Reyes, for how long? How much time? Fifty-seven continued for?
One week.
One week. New hearing date would be September seventeenth. Without objection, item fifty-seven shall be continued. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Item number ninety-five, called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti, item ninety-five, public hearing has been held on this matter in committee. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearing. Mr. Garcetti, moved?
Oh, sorry, not for open, actually not for public, I think there's any cards. Thank you. I wanted to praise the Bureau, I think that this is a good agreement and one in which there's, the majority of the language really gets towards where we need to be, and this is something that we're all going to be living with quite a bit, so I wanted to ask you some broader questions with TMDLs with this opportunity right now. I know this has come up quite a bit recently in Echo Park after, you know, Jessica Cortez, little girl who was abducted, there's been a lot of attention on the cleanliness of water, in fact, Telemundo was just here today, and they've, they've really been great in spotlighting that, but one of the things that I've been trying to, to push, obviously, is the public education component, that as we look at water quality in Echo Park, we could clean it up tomorrow, and if people are still living, you know, their dogs go to the bathroom on the street and not cleaning up after them, and if we throw trash in the street and down our drains, that the next day would be just as dirty water. And so, for all the folks that are watching on television, I think it's, it's critical, every time we have that opportunity to let people know that they are, that the problem is us, it's not somebody else, the problem really is us, and looking at, not just depending on the city to come up with a solution, but also looking at each one of us. One of the things that I was hoping you could update me, and if you could just hold the balance of my time, Mr. President, is what sort of coordination we're doing amongst the TMDLs, because I know that one of, one of the issues is whether or not some of the things that we do now on certain TMDLs might actually be working against future TMDLs that we have, and if you could just comment on that firstly. Secondly, on, I think one of the big problems and one of the things that we saddle the Bureau with, perhaps unfairly, because you don't have authority, obviously, at DWP, is now, as we look more strategically at water, more generally, in this city, what coordination have you had? What help do you need in greater coordination with DWP, at looking at how we can have reclaimed water and looking at our depleting water tables, and making sure that what we do with our TMDLs is a piece of that too? Thank you.
Okay, let me start, Judy Wilson, I'm Director of the Bureau of Sanitation for the City of Los Angeles. With me today is Mr. Shalom Karagani, who's head of our Watershed Protection Division, and Ms. Tracy Minamidi, who's head of our Regulatory Affairs Division. The timing on the adoption of these TMDLs has been difficult. The way it works, to remind some of you, this was a schedule that was part of a consent decree agreed upon between EPA and the National Resources Defense Council. The municipalities that have to implement and fund these TMDLs were not at the table. I wish a few engineers had been, because it was basically an attorney's agreement without people who have the practical knowledge of what's required in terms of implementation. Hence, we have schedules that have the sixty-eight- Hence, we have schedules that have the sixty-eight TMDLs coming out one at a time over the next thirteen years. So far, we're on our fourth TMDL. We've had two trash TMDLs, one for Biona Creek, one for L.A. River, and one for the low-flow diversions for bacteria for Santa Monica Bay. This is the fourth one. So far, the four TMDLs will add up to about a half a billion dollars of expenditure. Frankly, our concern, particularly on the wastewater side, where we are redesigning our plants, Los Angeles, Glendale, and Tillman, to do nitrogen removal, that's one TMDL that will be coming out later this year, but several years from now will be a phosphorus TMDL. If I'm going to redesign the plants, let's do it for phosphorus and nitrogen, except I don't know what the limits are going to be on phosphorus. So, it's been very frustrating on the part of people who are trained as planners and engineers. You'd never go about it this way in your wildest dreams. What we're trying to do through our Integrated Resources Program is to look at it in a more gestalt way, I guess I'd put it, where we're working on wastewater, stormwater, and potable water. And we are working very collaboratively with DWP on that. They're our partners, they're our funding partner for this program. And I think frankly, through this long-term plan, which is the vision for 2020, we will be achieving the type of visionary situation we want for the City of Los Angeles, ultimately to lead to sustainability. Today's TMDL is about bacteria during wet weather. How do we keep the beaches safe for people to use after storm? Generally, beaches are closed for three or four days after storm because high bacteria counts. The only way to meet AB-411 beach standards is to treatment. There's no other way. You can't do it through just best management practices or watershed planning. You have to have treatment. And we looked at the most cost-effective way we could think of, and since we already have low-flow diversions in place, and we'll have seventeen of them by the time we're finished within three years, I asked the staff, take a look to see how we can use the low-flow diversions to carry stormwater to Hyperion. And we determined what we would need to do is build a lot of storage underground and then gradually pump to Hyperion between midnight and 6:00 a.m., when we have capacity at the plant. And although it costs $370 million, it was the most cost-effective approach we could come up with. And I would caution, this will only work for the Santa Monica Bay. It probably won't work for Biona Creek. We're going to have to have a much more integrated approach. And our concern is, we want to protect the public, we want to have clean beaches, we want the cleanest beaches in the world, but we also need money to do it. And our biggest problem frankly is a lack of resources. We only get $28 million a year from stormwater pollution abatement fee. That's on the property tax, and it's about $23 per household. We need a significant rate increase on the stormwater pollution abatement fee in order to do the work that we need to do for the future of this city. We feel that we ought to be looking at watershed management, urban parks, river walks, river renaissance, and the cleanest beaches in the world. And I think the people will get behind us on that. But we need a two-thirds vote, because it's a Prop. 218 issue. We need to educate the public about how important this is, and we need money. Shalom Karagani, to my right, is fully subscribed, is $28 million a year is used right now just to implement the current permits, permit requirements. These TMDLs go into the stormwater permit, and that's the enforcement mechanism. If we don't start spending that money now on the trash TMDLs and on this bacteria TMDL, we're not going to be meeting the compliance requirements. Takes time in the City of Los Angeles to award contracts, to install various technologies. We're talking about a very large watershed, and we're already a little bit behind, in my opinion. And if absent a major rate increase in stormwater pollution abatement fee, we'll be looking at general font, and I don't want to see libraries closed and fire stations closed. We really need to think strategically about how we're going to fund this.
Thank you. I think I lost about a minute, Mr. President, in the timer, but I'll try to be brief. And I think you hit the nail on the head, and we all are very aware of that, and certainly our legislative team in Washington, this must be one of their highest priorities for our legislative program, that we have an unfunded federal mandate. And getting that sort of funding, though we have some help, is nowhere close to where we need to be, and the federal government is serious about this, and we welcome those standards, because we are serious about that, too. Certainly, we're the ones who use the beach. We have to make sure that that also gets that funding. Secondly, what Mr. Reyes is going to be chairing, we're going to have our first meeting of the Los Angeles River Committee of this body on September twenty-sixth, is that right? What time is that at? At ten? Ten, at ten a.m.? Okay. Ten a.m. in City Hall, having the first meeting of the Los Angeles River Committee. Looking at that as a holistic piece of that, again, with Echo Park Lake, what many people in the community learned for the first time, that water comes straight from our streets into the lake, out to the river, and eventually into the bay. And, and when we're talking about bacterial loads, this is really human and animal waste, essentially, that is, that is in our water. So, again, I want to ask you one question, just kind of in, in plain English for those who are either in the audience or watching on television. What can the average citizen do as their part, regardless of what we have to do structurally in the city, to help reduce these bacterial counts? If you could hold my time, I have one more question.
Well, we can certainly take better care of our pets, you know, make sure that you have your pooper-scooper with you when you walk your dog. Same thing when you take your dog to the beach, that's very important. We need to do a better job for our homeless, because one of our big problems is downtown the Skid Row area, where we don't have public toilets, and people need to meet nature's needs. And so, we need to do a better job there. In terms of the other kinds of things, in that toxic soup, you know, you have all kinds of chemicals that are unwanted, but this is bacteria. So, this is primarily human and animals. And those are the two big issues, the homeless and how people deal with their pets.
And obviously, the City Council, we're trying to deal with that with public toilets, and I think that's going to be important, just even from those folks who might have been opposed to it for other reasons. When you think about going to the beach, know that those are cleaning up your beaches, and certainly animals, even when they go in places that seem to be buried in a bush someplace, they will wash down when the rain comes. Lastly, the idea that you had explored, and I wonder if you could tell folks about it, would be perhaps having some tanks that would be underneath the parking lots at the beach.
Right. We have to figure out where to site the storage, and I want to do it in the most cost-effective way possible. And one thought we had was to try and identify parking lots next to the beach and do it underneath the parking lots. That's been used successfully up in the San Francisco Bay area as a strategy. Acquiring property for storage is going to be difficult. Siting it, environmentally clearing it, these things are going to take time. Happily, the Regional Board has been generous in their implementation schedule. It will take ten to seventeen years. Twenty-twenty is not twenty years from now. People keep thinking, oh, it's twenty years. It really isn't. By the time this gets adopted, it will be 2003, and that leaves us seventeen years to do a rather massive construction program. And I think we can do it. We've demonstrated in the past that Los Angeles is a can-do city. We did a great job in Hyperion, and we met the schedules, but it costs money. And we did have a rate increase in the sewer service charge to do it, and the good people of Los Angeles floated over $3 billion worth of bonds. I think by the time we get done with TMDLs, it's going to be more than the half billion, but this is to get us started. But what's very important to understand is what our goal here is not just to protect the bathers at the beach from bacteria. What we really want to do long-term is re-treat this stormwater and reuse it. And we, that's part of our long-range plan, that we're going to reuse at least fifty percent of our stormwater by the year 2020. That means we ultimately will need to put in distribution systems and irrigate our parks and public spaces, and hopefully conserve water and reuse this important resource.
Thank you very much. It may, colleagues, just in closing, be incumbent upon us at some point, more broadly, not just with the TMDLs, but our watershed. I know that the state is starting to look at this. We, as a city, there are some folks who have gotten a little bit out in front of this, but I think as a city, we need to make even more of an effort. We may at some point, even on this council, look at a, an ad hoc committee, just looking at water more broadly, and making sure that we're planning ahead for ten, fifteen years as that watershed depletes, and how we can tie in some of the TMDL and cleaning up of the water that exists as a, as a piece of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Members of the council, I've been invited, I've been advised by the clerk that the report before us is a communication from the committee, not a full committee report requiring us to reopen the public hearing here at the council. I do have two speaker cards. The council calls forward at this time Leslie Mintz, to be followed by Brian Quincy.
Good morning, council members. I'm Leslie Mintz, Attorney for Heal the Bay. I'm here largely to thank the council. Recently, at the State Water Board, recently at the State Water Board, the city was very supportive of the dry weather bacteria TMDL. And it was wonderful to hear the city say, we can do this. We can meet this time schedule. And I hope this positive attitude can spill over into other stormwater issues. We largely support today the city's comments. I understand that the city will be making a motion to strike certain portions, and our support is contingent upon that. We feel it is a generous TMDL. It is a lengthy implementation period, but we are willing to stand arm-in-arm with the city, given their proactive stance, and say together to the state board, this is what we think will work. One last issue I'd like to bring up is that we, we are very supportive of the fact that the Bureau of Sanitation is concerned about funding, and we want the council to know that Heal the Bay will be there with you to help you create additional financing mechanisms. At this time, we're not prepared to advise you as to which the best mechanism is. We feel it may be premature to have commentary in a letter on a TMDL about a particular option, given that your integrated plan is not yet complete. And we feel it's essential that whatever you do, you leverage your resources, you have strategic thinking for all the TMDLs. You don't lock yourself into one particular option, and you make sure it works within the framework of the integrated plan. Thank you.
Brian Quincy Hutchings.
Good morning, council. I call, I call it Drink the Bay, because there's some absurdities. The most, the most salient absurdity is about oil. If you've ever heard of Redondo Sea, between Redondo and Catalina, oil comes out of the ground underwater there, and I don't know how much, I've never seen it quantified, because we've been pumping out oil probably since before it was really measured, anyway. So, it's actually part of the food chain. It feeds the fish. I know it's unbelievable, but the other thing is, is a lot of this, a lot of these regulations are based on what the EPA and SQM, all these organizations use. It's called linear no threshold. It's just a graphical technique, and it's actually, it actually almost never applies. In other words, they assume that every, even below the data points, that every accumulation is toxic, and, and it's just not true. I mean, it's, it's not, it's not true for anything you think of, and the good example is, take a trace element like molybdenum, which is very toxic in overdose, but you need it. It's, it's a requirement in animal nutrition, so. And you can see this especially with, it seems like chromium six, the high, the absolute high over chromium six in the water, and nobody knows yet really if it's, if it's that horrible. And, and MTBE, and even fluoride. A lot of people get, go crazy over fluoride in the water, whereas there's natural fluoride in the water.
If I can ask you to conclude?
And this is going to apply, I don't have to repeat this for ninety-six, because it's the same thing, linear no threshold. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes the public comment for Item Number Ninety-Five. We now return to council discussion and debate. Members, I have next Mr. Burnson, followed by Ms. Misakowski, Mr. Zine, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Labonge, and Mr. Weiss. Mr. Burnson.
Yes, members of the council, this is a very serious issue, and obviously, we all have to be cognizant of it and support the efforts to, to clean the bay and make sure that our runoff on flood control is properly sanitized. But I think all of us need to understand what the cost is going to be. It's going to be severe. And the contributions that we're getting from the other cities and the rest of the county don't even come close. I think it only amounts to about $28 million altogether, is that correct?
That's correct. Twenty-eight million is what we're seeing.
And the cost of this over a seventeen-year period is about $350 million, approximately.
That's about right, about $370.
So, we need to know how we're going to pay for this, and I, it's a very serious thing. And obviously, the, the objective is, is a very good one, but all things need to be prioritized. I mean, if it means having not enough police officers or paramedics or something, you're going to have to weigh that in the future when you find a way to, to fund this. This was done, we originally ran into something like this with the Hyperion thing on the secondary treatment many, many years ago, before even I was on the council, and the council avoided the issue at that time, ultimately got sued and had to enter into consent decree, which cost us billions of dollars. And we finally have virtually completed that project, finally, right, Cindy? So, but this is serious also. And one of the things that comes to mind is, this is a consent decree that was entered into between the EPA and the NRDC, which means the city wasn't a participant in the, in the lawsuit or in the consent decree, which gives us perhaps some leeway in negotiations, and I hope that we don't put ourselves in a position financially where we're unable to perform or we have to affect other services. One of the things we may want to look at, as long as the Heal the Bay people were so helpful, and I, and I support their efforts, don't take this the wrong way, but perhaps one of the things that we need to do as legislators and people that have to find ways to pay for the services is to get people who use the services to help pay it off. And that may mean, just as we do with transportation, with toll roads, just as we do with, and some of the things that are being looked at now by the Southern California Association of Governments on Goods Movement, where perhaps the people who generate the problem are going to have to pay for some of the means of dealing and solving the problem, perhaps people who use the beaches may have to find a way to help participate in this in some manner. So, I just want everybody to understand how serious this is. I also want to comment about the Water Quality Resources Board, which I do not have a great deal of faith in, and I'll tell you why. This is a board that is going to monitor supposedly and make decisions on whether we're doing the right thing. This is a board that allowed Sunshine Canyon to reopen with their two main water sources for the city and county of Los Angeles, the Los Angeles Reservoir and the Metropolitan Water District Filtration Plant, less than a mile below the downwind portion of those, of the, of the Sunshine Canyon landfill. To me, I appeared in Sacramento before that board, I argued before the county board. To me, they were both completely irresponsible. I don't have a great deal of faith in them. I just could not let this moment pass without expressing my contempt for both of them on what they did at Sunshine Canyon.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I think Mr. Burnson has pursued a lot of the line of questioning that I was concerned about. And members, I, I think it may be appropriate, as much as we have consensus today, as much as we have a very, very good job that was done by our Bureau of Sanitation and on the issues of, of the stormwater and stepping up to the plate in terms of acknowledging what we need to do to, to get compliance, I, I think it might be appropriate to ask for continuation of this to our next meeting and ask that our financial consultants, our CLA and our CAO, come up to start talking to us about some of the options. Not the options about whether or not we do it, but the option of how we do it. And I think we need to begin that process. I think Mr. Garcetti was right, that it may even be important enough to start talking about an ad hoc water quality committee, not only affecting our beaches, but all of our water systems, the Los Angeles River, Biona Creek, not only this TMDL, but the other TMDL standards and dates that are coming forward. One of the things, in terms of implication, and Mr. Burnson gave some ideas about user-related costs, there's other things that we need to be aware of in this city, and I, I don't know, Ms. Wilson, if you can address right now. Differentially, what part of the city regionally do you think the burden falls on more heavily than others in terms of where our watershed comes?
Well, at least for the first four, we have a lot of the drainage just coming from the valley. And for example, for the trash TMDL for the Los Angeles River, eighty percent of that watershed is in the valley. So, as long as we stay together as a city, the residents of the valley will have the advantage of really being subsidized by the rest of the city. Instead of getting eighty percent of the bill, they'll get forty percent of the bill. So, that's something to consider.
And it, it needs to be looked at, again, in terms of Mr. following Mr. Burnson's idea. I mean, is, are there areas of the city, is there area, when we intercept, Mr. Garcetti talked about the renewal or potentially putting a catchment area under the parking lots at the beach, sort of the end of the stream. There may be areas upstream that could be more effective, more cross-productive. We, I think, I think we really need to look at, at- We, I think, I think we really need to look at agreeing with this, ascertaining that we need to be starting this process. But I think it really is appropriate to have our city financial entities begin to look at what the options are, not only seeking additional assistance at the federal level and at the state level, but as we turn, recognizing that in our Southern California, Los Angeles community, the beaches are such an important part of our economy, such an important part of essentially the face of Los Angeles and, you know, some of the highest tourist attractions. We really need to start talking about that covenant we have as sort of protectors of the beach with our citizens, with our communities, as to how we need to raise that awareness, raise that participation in seeking it, leveraging our money. But I think it's appropriate at this time, not just to be talking about a program and an agreement, but let's get our financial people at the table and start talking, not to choose an option. I agree with Heal the Bay that it may be too early to pick the appropriate option. But we've got to start talking about the options, having that dialogue, whether or not we consider something for the ballot in spring, is something we ought to know about. And I think we have our people at the table. If we delay this just one day to have that additional discussion by some of those folks who work with us on our budget, on our forecasting, and on our capability of handling things, it would be useful to move forward hand in hand. So my motion would be to continue this for one day.
Which would be Friday. Is there a second? There's a second. Motion, a second to continue. Members, should we vote on the motion to continue or continue with the discussion? Let's continue with the discussion. Mr. Zine. You're next on the queue. We're still discussing this.
Okay, thank you. I would vote to continue, but we'll discuss. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good afternoon. The, a couple of questions I have. You say this comes from this particular issue, from animals and humans.
That's correct. It's bacteria.
And are we doing anything to address that cause of the problem?
We are. We have in our stormwater permit, we have a lot of requirements that we are trying to deal with folks that are not handling this kind of situation appropriately. We do a lot of outreach to pet owners. One of the other issues, of course, is leaky sewers. We want to make sure that our sewer system is in good shape, and we're prepared to spend over a billion dollars over the next 10 years rehabbing our sewer system. But most of this is urban runoff. Very rarely, it's only once in the last three years that a beach has been closed because of a sewer problem.
So this is being generated by animals and by humans?
Animals and people.
And then the cost of this, $370 million, that's just to address that part of it?
That's correct. That's just the bacteria, and it's just for Santa Monica Bay. You're going to have TMDLs for Los Angeles River and Biona Creek as well, and the Nubingas Channel.
So the total cost for this 20-year program, how many billion dollars are we talking?
I don't know if I can hesitate a guess until we see how these TMDLs come out, but it's going to be over the half-billion that I presented to you today. This is just for the first four TMDLs. We have 64 more to go.
And other cities that feed into the Santa Monica Bay, are they also assessed a fee?
They are on the hook as well, because all of this goes into each city's stormwater permit. And so they're going to have to make a contribution in some way to this program. I've met with some of the other cities, and they realize that we need a regional solution. And that they harken back to the 1930s, when there was a significant flood problem in Los Angeles. Each city didn't build its own dam. People got together and formed a flood control district, and everybody paid into it. So that's another strategy, joining hands with our other jurisdictions in LA County, putting something on a county ballot is a potential possibility.
And what about the county's financial responsibility?
They are the principal permittee, but all of us are responsible for the water bodies within our jurisdictions.
And will this then affect businesses more than residents or equal?
Well, it's on a property tax, and I'm going to ask Sharam, because he's really quite expert in how this is levied in terms of the amount of property and the slope, et cetera.
They'll turn this. They adjusted over there.
Good afternoon, Sharam Karagani, Watershed Protection Manager. As far as the fees are concerned, Councilmember, it is based on facility, impervious and impervious area of a given lot size. So we have different, what we call runoff factor for different land uses. So if a property can keep all of the discharge of stormwater runoff from their property, obviously, their charge would be low. And if it comes off of the property because of the impervious area, then the charge would be higher. And also, it's a function of if they have included series of what we call best management practices, if they have those on site to capture the water and treat it before they release it to our storm drain system.
For example, our residents living in the Santa Monica Mountains, Woodland Hills, Brentwood, Bel Air, would they pay a higher fee than someone living in a flat area?
No, the user system used in the city, both for wastewater and stormwater, is what we call amalgamated system, which means the cost is collected in one basket and is distributed based on a given formula. So irrespective of where they are living, in the city of LA, they pay the same amount. But if their lot size obviously is bigger, and they have more pervious area or impervious area, that charge would differ. But as far as the cost, it is one throughout the city, it's the same throughout the city.
And will the voters have to vote on this?
Yes, as the director indicated, that this is subject to what we call Proposition 218. Stormwater fee is a property-related fee, and we need to have two-thirds of the property owners.
And as we're doing this in increments, this first part, then there'll be other components that will come in later on.
You are correct, sir, yes.
And this regionalized concept, how close are we to coming forth with a regionalized concept to bring in, as we have SCAG, and as we have these other entities that represent large areas, how close are we to bringing everyone together on this project?
I really can't answer that. I know that the Coalition for Practical Regulation has come to the realization that we need some sort of regional bond issue. But whether they are close enough to do something in the spring or not, I don't know. I think we would really have to have a high-level meeting with the Board of Supervisors and have this type of discussion.
And who would generate that?
Who would generate the meeting?
And we need to move forward.
Yes, I would think that the mayor and the president of council would get together with the Board of Supervisors and have this conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilmember Hahn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And colleagues, when we're, I do want to also add my resolve as a member of the City Council to, as Councilwoman Misakowski said, not, you know, if or when, but, you know, how we're going to do this. And I am as committed to this as I was the last time this came up, that this is, even though it seems unattainable, and it seems large, and it seems expensive, no less, I believe it's something, you know, we need to attain. And I, as a council member that represents the harbor area, again, it's my Cabrillo Beach, which is a mother's beach, which is places that mothers take their kids, is always on the, one of the 10 worst beaches in the state. I recently met with Mayor Greg Hill of Redondo Beach, who informed me of, I thought, an innovative financing strategy for what we're talking about. It's called Adopt a Storm Drain. And in Redondo Beach, Manhattan Beach, it's modeled after the Adopt a Highway programs, where you get corporate sponsors who will agree to pay so much money to adopt a storm drain, and then we're allowed to put up, you know, it looks like it's very nice signage that recognizes the corporate sponsor and lets the public know every time they drive by a particular place that that is a storm drain and that we need to keep it clean. Those kind of monies can be used for, you know, catch basin inserts, high-technology cleanup solutions, dry flow diversion, urban watershed, and storm drain cleaning, and of course, outreach and educational programs. In Redondo Beach, which is, you know, we all know the size of Redondo Beach, in their first year, they were able to raise $75,000 to help in meeting their goals of cleaning their storm drains. I think it's an innovative strategy. I don't think it's certainly the complete solution to how we finance this, but I would like to move that the sanitation department come back and report on how Los Angeles can get involved in Adopt a Storm Drain program. I feel if we've got corporate sponsors for toilets in Los Angeles, we can certainly get corporate sponsors to help clean up our storm drains and help us with this problem. Clearly, this is, in my opinion, an opportunity for the private sector to partner with the public sector. This is an issue, Mary Nichols, our Secretary of Resources, has said that storm drain runoff is one of the number-one threats to public safety in the state of California. So it is a serious issue. I am particularly committed to this and hope the city will not back out, back off one bit in terms of our resolve. But I would like to see you come back and see how we can get involved in Adopt a Storm Drain. I think it's one answer to helping to finance our goal.
Is there a second to that motion?
All right, there is not a second, but let us, oh, I'm sorry, there is a second. Mr. Labange, second. Very good. All right, the chair now recognizes Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, when we speak of the Alley River, it's just not the river in of itself, but it's the water system that impacts all our neighborhoods. We spoke of the watershed, it's not only the San Fernando Valley, it's also the Sangiovese Valley. It's all interconnected. When you look at all the tributaries that connect to the river, it connects to the wells. There's a gallery of wells that are thousands of feet under the Alley River, that connects to sub lakes that are miles and miles wide and long under the city, that has been identified as superfund sites by the federal government. So we are talking about a multi-jurisdictional effort. This is a city, county, state, federal issue. The Alley River is but a mechanism to deal with the water issues. And yes, I believe we should look at it in a more focused fashion, how we look at the water as an ad hoc committee. That could be a strategy. But I don't want to lose momentum in how we're looking at the conversion of the river so it can be a vehicle by which we address these concerns. Last winter, I went to Washington, I spoke with a few senators and congress members. I see how much the feds are spending in water systems nationally, and they are big-ticket items. But these cities and these states have been proactive for years. The city needs to catch up, and we need to do this comprehensively. That's why I want to work with each one of you to look at how, through Chairman of Land Use and Management, we start re-identifying those corridors along the river to identify opportunities for these different water cleaning systems that have a multipurpose goal. They cannot only filter, mitigate, and create watershed opportunities, but we can reassess how we use the surface of these facilities to reconnect with the water system. So our challenge is, how do we get Department of Wrecked Parks to fold into this process because of the green space they control? How do we get Community Development Department with its federal resources to look at issues of loan program, small business development assistance, to deal with water reclamation and the filtering process? How do we get Cultural Affairs to bring in resources so we can highlight the various historic elements of the river, so we can bring back that which is a high, high commodity, which is our history and our architecture through these systems? How do we give Public Works to Bureau of Sanitation so we can interface with Department of Water and Power and the various bureaus so we can leverage these resources? These are the things I'm hoping the River Committee can begin to address. There are many cooks in this one stew, need to figure out what is the best menu that we can work with, what are the best ingredients that needs to come together to address these issues. And it is a multi-million dollar effort. Believe me, colleagues, I'm not suffering illusions of grandeur. This is a big-ticket item. This is a large process. Councilman Burnson, I may, but this is the kind of positive thinking we need, we need to be creative. Because this is a way also to release the pressures of those communities who are partly poor. In Japan, they are building green spaces on the roofs to oxygenize their environment because of the thermal conditioning that's happening to our world system. And the city plays a big part of it. It's all interconnected. So I know I'm speaking to a lot of different issues, but I want to demonstrate the comprehensive nature that we need to look, to see, in order for us to bring the money to the table. And that's going to be the bottom line. Can we show the federal government that this city is geared up to spend that kind of resource and create the relief that we need? And so it's not only the water, it's all the other elements that connect to the river. And it's not just the river, it's the lake systems, it's the wells, it's all connected.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. The chair recognizes Councilmember Labange.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the council, I gladly second your motion as far as continuing to get a report on what it costs, because that's extremely important, and we have to look at the long range. And I gladly support this concept of dealing with this issue. One day, I want water and power at the table with you to discuss what Councilmember Garcetti spoke about, of having that full, lengthy discussion, not about water today and tomorrow, but in 2010, in 2020, in 2030, in 2040, just like they probably had discussions in 1890 and 1810, in that time. It's a circle as we look at it all. I also like what you said, Ed, too, about all the bodies of water that are in here, and the importance of looking at every particular aspect of that, which is so important, and the regional approach. Members of the council, every time I go to a corner in Los Angeles at a gas station, I look at the gas station price, because the only way I believe we could eventually, and I want everybody to listen to this, eventually pay for this in Public Works, and our Public Works Commissioner, just to hear here, is to look at the gas tax, the long range and the gas tax approach, to try and raise money for this here. I look at the gas, and it's 157 in Eric Garcetti's district at the Arco Station, right there on Las Feliz Boulevard at Antwater Village. And I look at the gas around it, what the price is. And what I'm saying to us, members, if we come back, we got to ask for state legislation to, in this county, in this region, and talk to SCAG, and to say that maybe we raise the gas tax two or three cents to try to capture the money that it's going to take to do this very important project of cleaning up the waterways. I look at the Los Angeles River all the time, it's very much part of my life and being, I look at the river, especially to the central part of the city, and I want to see some low-flow dikes there so that we could capture the trash, so it doesn't go to Long Beach, so it doesn't pollute the San Pedro area at all. These are extremely important things that we should do, but I want to just put on the table for our CLA and our chief analyst there, when he makes his report tomorrow, that if we, what would it be if we raised gas tax two or three cents for not just this issue here, but for other mitigation for environmentally that's necessary? What would it raise over the course of time, and could we work with that, Eric? Because I don't think there, I can't, I don't see we could put this on the backs of the property owners of Los Angeles County, of Los Angeles City, without having some way that everybody shares in it. So I just wanted to thank Cindy for always having the focus on looking at that, how we're going to pay for it. I do support this program, but I want to make sure we have a realistic way to pay for it, and we're not just going to box this into a quarter where we're taking money then away from other important needs. Thank you all, members.
Thank you. Let me now call on Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'm going to vote for, Madam President, for your motion to continue, so I'll be very brief. I just want to reflect at the end of this conversation, when it comes to the environment, this is not your father's city council. I mean, I think you folks from the department have been hearing loud and clear, and you've been hearing this time and time again, when you've brought forth the TMDL issue before this council, that this council views environmental protection perhaps differently than others who have sat here before us, probably because it's more important than ever that we be aggressive and that we be seen as leaders, not just in the state, but in the nation. And you've heard this from us time and time again, and I'm confident that we're going to see a process of going forward and working together with groups such as Heal the Bay. I think it's terrific that we've had a session here this morning, when Heal the Bay has stood up and said that if the council votes to excise certain paragraphs, which we are almost certain to do, that they will stand with the city of Los Angeles. That's what it has to be when it comes to the environment, it has to be a partnership. It cannot be adversarial. And I know that that's, I'm pretty confident that that's the attitude that you're going to take forward, Ms. Wilson, from all of these hearings, and I know that's something that you're committed to and your staff is committed to. And so I'm cautiously optimistic that... And so I, I'm cautiously optimistic that we're going to be turning the corner today, if not actually on implementing the solution, on realizing that we have a new consensus in Los Angeles, and the consensus is to put the environment first. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The chair now recognizes Mr. Holden.
Ms. Wilson, you have an awesome responsibility. You have 14 different opinions thrown at you today, and for the most part, as I see it, very little is understood by them. There exists a consent decree which require, if not demand, that we meet certain goals in a certain time period. Is that correct?
That's correct. Well, I have to say that TMDLs need to be adopted within a certain time period.
Time period.
The implementation schedules have more discretion.
Which is, oh, beyond the seven to 20 years?
So far, the most generous schedule received was 17 years for the bacteria TMDL.
For bacteria-only?
That's right.
And then the other, 64, 63?
That remains to be seen. The dry weather is a three-year schedule, the trash is a 10-year schedule after two years of monitoring.
So the 17 years is kind of at the very end, all the others should have been adopted by then?
Well, we'll see what happens, but I think...
A three-year schedule ensures less than a 17-year schedule?
It certainly is.
Well, that's a simple statement. So therefore, 17 years, there any TMDL, TMDM, TMDL that's required, that's beyond 17 years, yes or no?
I don't think that they're going to extend TMDLs for implementation beyond 2020, I'd be surprised if they did.
All right, so then therefore, all of the 60-plus TMDLs must be adopted and then implemented to the, within 20 years?
That's correct. I'd say that's a fair statement.
That's what I was trying to get across. Now, if that being the case, that was done by consent decree, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay? And I would think that the council members must know then that what that really means, Mr. Bernson touched on it. And so I'm going to have an amendment to what's before us today, which will address the issue for Heal the Bay. She looked at the motion, the staff has looked at the motion. But the bottom line is, is also, in addition to everything else, direct the city attorney's office to schedule a closed session with the city council to discuss the consent decree between EPA and RDC regarding TMDL's adoption. That's part of the motion as well, which everybody agrees with. Now, what I'm saying is that those two organizations, EPA, et cetera, adopted a consent decree which affects the city of Los Angeles as it is therefore required to implement 60-plus TMDL within a 20-year timeframe. And the city of Los Angeles was not even considered for discussion in the adoption of that. Now, we had the sewer service charges implemented of about $5 billion, which means we had to go to the public to have them vote for bond measure to do that once EPA took us to court and beat us on that issue. Now, you're talking about $500 million as a minimum to implement this program or TMDLs. Well, you've got to understand then that the money is not there. This is just five times of the $100 million that you're going to have for the affordable housing that you're going to put up each year. So somebody's got to be dreaming around here to think that we're going to come up with all this money, and when it's really not available at all. Now, you're going to have to go to the people if their law stands. My motion also says that we'll have this closed session under consent decree, and I'll sit, make the point was better, Chair. We should, by law, you're required as a third party to participate in this litigation, as a third-party intervention, as one of the third parties, that is affected by the two parts of interest, but the third party didn't have any input. Now, we need to say to the other two parties that this is a financial problem for the city of Los Angeles. The schedule may not be complied with, but the intent and the goal is something that we support. And we cannot, unless and until we come up with the half-billion dollars, there's no way you can totally implement the program. I think even Heal the Bay understands that. So this motion I ask as an amendment, which satisfies striking certain points of the statement that's to be made, and also the added comment regarding directing the city attorney to address the issue.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Chair now recognizes Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, or Madam President, say, colleagues, I would just simply say that it's not that bad to be a dreamer every once in a while, Mr. Holden, sometimes it's through that process that we get somewhere. But I just simply want to request, as we go through this whole transformation of the Alley River, or at least our goal of transforming the Alley River, that we look at, and I want to support Mr. Reyes' committee and Mr. Labonte's, a good point, that we all need to think about the Alley River as an asset in our city. So I simply would ask that you look around Olympic, and where the river crosses Olympic and near Soto, because we're going to be doing some major redevelopment on the Sears site, and it would be great to have a waterfront project there, or something where we dam the river, control the flow, and deal with some of these issues. So I just simply want to add that to the wish list of things that we can do with our river, and I believe Mr. Reyes will consider that in his committee.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. The chair now recognizes Councilmember Bernson the second time.
I move the previous question on the entire matter.
All right, Mr. Bernson has moved the previous question. Mr. Clerk, what do we have before? Oh, excuse me, is there any objection to the previous question? No, all right.
And whether or not there was a motion at the table to continue this, we got to take immediate action.
Point of order, continuation comes first.
That's my point. Before I vote on the previous...
But the point is to continue only for one day, which has been till Friday, so I think we can have the discussion.
One day, you have no problem with that, one day?
We can do that as long as we have a policy guidance on the letter, because we have to get our comments to the Regional Board by September 16th.
Could we make that next Tuesday? I'm not going to be here on Friday because of AQMD, so...
I mean, there you go, you have your problem.
All right, well, perhaps we can split the question and have the approval of the policy guideline letter as Ms. Wilson is asking, so it can be sent off, but also then continue the matter for discussion until, it was Friday, but Mr. Bernson has asked till next week. Yes, Ms. Hahn?
Yes, point of reference, what about my motion?
The clerk is going to go through all of the motions.
Okay.
Ms. Wilson, is that okay?
That'd be fine. We could take the action on the letter today and deal with the financial issues tomorrow, it'd be great.
All right, Mr. Clerk, what are the various motions we have before us?
Okay, you do have a motion to continue, however, you do also have two duly-seconded motions, one by Ms. Hahn and one by Mr. Holden. If you continue the entire matter, those motions would go over with this matter, and it would show up on Friday.
Well, I think the request now is to go ahead and ask for a vote on the letter so that it can be transmitted by the Bureau to Regional Water Quality, and then continue the matter until Tuesday, but let's look at the other two motions. What are the other two motions?
Okay, Mr. Holden's motion has been circulated, and I believe you read it into the record.
Right, that was the one asked for CLA, CAO report back in 60 days, and also the city attorney's schedule a closed session. I think that can be considered a friendly amendment, we will can add that as part of the action. And Ms. Hahn's motion?
And Ms. Hahn's motion is to ask the Bureau of Sanitation to report back on how Los Angeles can be involved in a program such as Adopt a Drain.
All right, I believe that that is also something that could be considered a friendly amendment to the communication that's on the desk today. So, members, let us vote on the letter that was presented, and the communication from Environmental Quality Committee did recommend, and then have the matter continued until next week, Tuesday, for CAO, CLO, CLA beginning of a financial report. So if that's clear, Mr. Holden?
Part of my motion does discuss the amendment to the letter, and is that continuing to be incorporated? Fine.
I think, there's no objection to that from the Bureau, so that will also be part of the letter then, that will be officially transmitted. If that's clear, members, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. That matter is approved, to send the letter as a communication, and then we will also have this matter back next week, Tuesday, with the CAO and CLA.
Which is September 17th.
September 17th. Next item?
Thank you.
Item number 94 is closed session.
Hold that on the desk.
So item number 96 is now before you, that is, Councilmember Bernson called it special.
Mr. Bernson?
Yes, I called it special simply to tell you that the Environmental Committee made some recommendations relative to the AQMD's policy on the harbor, and also the CLA has made some changes. I will represent the city's position on that in the AQMD on Friday morning. I just want to point out that obviously we had, this is another one of these cases where you support the object or the policy, but things that people don't realize sometimes is that it's impossible to have non-diesel equipment, for example, that is capable, power-wise, of dealing with certain types of activities as yet, with CNG and other types of fuel are not yet at a technology stage to do this. So what we will be doing is supporting the policy, but asking them not to have jurisdiction to mandate over certain types of uses, and suggest that we will seek, shall we say, enticements or reward system for our ability to comply as technology and so forth allow us to do so. So I would just ask that we approve the recommendations, and I will carry them forth on Friday.
That is Mr. Bernson's recommendation. Members, I've been informed that as a communication, where there wasn't able to be a hearing in committee, although we do have a communication before us, a public hearing is required, and we do have one card that was submitted, so let me call it this time, Mr. Brian Quincy.
Hi, Count, that's Brian Quincy Hutchings, and I've written up a lot of this stuff, and it's on my campaign website, quincyforboard.homestead.com. I'm running for school board, I've got curriculum. The thing, okay, what the council just mentioned about diesel, I spoke against that when it came up here, as well as at the school boards, because actually diesel is more efficient in terms of carbon dioxide, energy-wise, than liquid natural gas or compressed natural gas. So, but the whole, diesel was demonized over the course of years by the media to get this to go over. And it's all based on the linear no threshold thing that I talked about earlier. The only thing I have to say about that was, the one time when I talked with the assistant to the Assemblyman Wildman, who was the head of the Joint Legislative Audit Committee over at the Belmont Hearing Commission, which was a whole, nothing but a big scam to basically turn it over to charter school movement, Belmont. When I mentioned the linear no threshold thing, she just all of a sudden had to go, you know? But the most important thing in regard to this, as far as environmental justice goes, is the Kyoto Protocol. Now, the media's baited a big to-do that the administration did not sign the Kyoto Protocol, where in fact, they are 111% behind it because they are behind free trade. The centerpiece of the Kyoto Protocol is called the Emissions Trading Scheme, and this is the stuff that John Nash developed at the Rand Corporation. There are three board members from Rand on the cabinet, there were four on the Bush 2000 Committee, they hired the chairman of the board, Mr. O'Neill, to be the Secretary of Treasury. They are totally behind this trading emissions scheme, emissions trading scheme.
Mr. Quincy, just...
They've got 178 other countries to form a cartel, including OPEC countries, against us on oil. And at the same time, they've mothballed the Hanford reactor program, so they're not behind nuclear power at all. So the whole thing is like, is bizarre. So please, you know, don't be so knee-jerk on these, you know, it's like, it's like you've been taken over by the Green Party and Ralph Nader, Mr., you know, I wouldn't be a member of a party that had me as a candidate.
Okay, thank you. The chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Madam Chair, members, Mr. Bernson, this matter, when it comes before the Southern California Act Control District, we would should consider these regulations very carefully. As we, the city would like to be in compliance, fine. We have independent departments, including the port, the airport, et cetera, and the port, for an example, did testify before the committee, and they were concerned about the fact that if there were to be some regulations adopted, would be prohibitive to allowing their tenants to operate, it would affect the income of the port. And I included that as part of eight and nine, as terms of these items listed in the motion. And the reason why that's significant is because we have the Alameda Corridor, we're trying to increase the business in the area, and that could very well be a problem. Now, they have some programs there for incentive volunteer programs to improve the air quality that they are participating in. So I would urge you to express upon the commission, other members of the commission, that this is a concern to the port, and maybe even have them go up and testify. And that's why we asked for the 90 days here, so that it can, for hearing, for response. Pardon? I got you on that one? Oh, are we lucky? The city is lucky to have you. Okay, very good. So you understands.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilmember Hahn.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate the fact that the Harvard Department came and expressed concerns, and you're right, I'm, you know, they're welcome to testify at any hearing, but I must say again, you know, I don't ever believe we need to make a choice between good business and a good environment, and certainly everything we are doing, and the mayor of Los Angeles has said it is his initiative that there be no net increase of emissions in and around the Port of Los Angeles. So, you know, if it's any attempt by the Port of Los Angeles or Harvard Department to in any way exempt themselves from any of these regulations, I, you know, am not in favor of that. We want them to comply there. We know now that under no doubt that diesel emissions do cause cancer, the Environmental Protection Agency just came out with that report. The community of Wilmington and San Pedro, on a daily basis, suffer from diesel emissions as a direct result of the activity at the Port of Los Angeles. So I'm not concerned that it's going to affect business down there if they comply with any of these regulations. So I just want to go on the records, they're welcome to testify, and I know they have concerns, but the air quality in and around the harbor is a big concern to me and those of us who live there on a daily basis.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Well, with that statement, if I'm ever notified that they're exceeding the air quality, the emissions there in that area, I'll put a motion in to shut the port down. If you second the motion, we can close the port, LAX, I mean, not LAX, just the port, because that's not your issue, LAX, but that's what you want. But when you're given this choice, I mean, I know we can make these statements, but when you're given a hard choice, whether or not you want to shut it down, and I'm sure it won't come to that. Then, of course, we'll have to reconsider. We wouldn't have spent the billion dollars to build the Alameda Corridor in order to increase, I understand that. So I don't think it was the intent of the chair of the committee or the representative from the port to say that we're going to increase emission in that area at all. No, we're not going to do that. What's, the maximum is being capped, and they're only going to improve on it. And what they're saying is that don't impose any additional hardships unless they get an opportunity to review it, that's what they're basically saying.
Thank you. Mr. Bernson has the last pick, I believe he was going to call the previous...
Yeah, I am, but I do, I don't think anybody else, let me just say this, I don't think the harbor or any other city department is any different than the private sector. Where it is possible to comply, they should comply, and that has been the policy of AQMD, and it's been a policy that I've supported. Now, there are some areas where they may not be able to because of the technology gap, and where those, where that currently exists, we want to change the language to simply state that we will comply as we are able to comply with technology keeping up and with the availability of assistance, because there are funds that are programmed from the state, such as the Carl Moyer Funds for Conversion from Diesel, and these are the things that we want to amend into it. We're no way are we saying that we don't want to comply, or we're not going to try to comply. And with that, I have to leave, so if you want to open the roll, you'll have my vote on. Either way, I'll do what I'm going to do on Friday, so it really don't matter.
All right, we do have Mr. Bernson's motion in front of us, there is no one else requesting to speak, so, Mr. Clerk... So, Mr. Clerk, Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Twelve eyes.
That matter is approved, we will send that forth with to give guidance to Mr. Burnson. Mr. Clerk, what else?
Madam President, not on the agenda is special one, and it's motion submitted by Councilmember Ms. Skowski, seconded by Mr. Weiss, and City Attorney will speak to the need to make findings.
Thank you. On August 27th, at approximately 11 o'clock in the evening, three employees at the Kukuru Restaurant were shot and killed in front of the restaurant. And the police department has asked for a reward in hopes that some of the people who saw the incident would come forward, and therefore the council need to make findings that the need act rose after the posting of the agenda and there's an immediate need act.
Can we open the roll on the findings? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Twelve eyes.
Thank you. That matter now offering the reward for this incident is before us. Mr. Weiss?
Madam President, I just want to say, since you're in the chair, you brought this forward, I know, because I know how concerned you've been about this particular shooting. We've discussed it in the past, and I know it's something that you take a personal interest in, and I hope it does some good.
Thank you. Chair now recognizes Mr. Pacheco.
I was going to move approval.
That matter is now moved and before us. Open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Eleven eyes.
Thank you, we'll send that forth with, please.
Also not on the agenda is special two, it's a motion submitted by Councilmember Pacheco and seconded by several members. City Attorney will speak to the need to make findings.
Yes, this has to do with the Entertainment Industry Development Corporation. There have been several reports recently, and in fact, it's my understanding, the district attorney is asking that action be taken or investigation be taken immediately on this. This is, this motion basically does start the process for reports back in 30 days, and therefore the council need to make the findings, the need act arose after the posting of the agenda and there's an immediate need act.
Is there any discussion on the findings? Seeing none? Let's, this is just on the findings, Mr. Holden, so let's open the roll on the findings? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Eleven eyes.
All right, now the matters before us, Chair recognizes Mr. Pacheco.
Madam President, colleagues, what you have before you is a motion to just bring some of the questions that have been raised to council, and specifically, the first moving part is that EIDC reports to budget and finance regarding the collection of all city fees to reassure our constituents that our city fees are being fully collected. The second moving section is that the controller, excuse me, the CLA and the CAO be directed, and the controller be requested, since the controller doesn't work for us but works for the entire city of Los Angeles, to report to the Audit and Government Efficiency Committee in 30 days on the status of the city's involvement, including the removal of all city elected officials from the Board of Directors, and also what structural organizational changes can be made to improve services to the motion picture industry. The final moving part is that EIDC prominently display and advise all applicants that EIDC services are optional, advise all applicants that their decision to use EIDC will not result in any reduction of city fees, advise all applicants that the total amount of fees assessed to each applicant includes a $450 expediter fee, which is retained by EIDC for their service, and advise applicants that EIDC does not approve permit requests, the city of Los Angeles does. If you look at the written document, the last word "and" should be stricken, it was a typo, and the semicolon should just be a period. Simply ask for your support, colleagues, this is just to get a handle on some of the issues raised and clarify our role, and obviously establish the appropriate relationship with EIDC as a corporation.
Chair recognizes Mr. Zain.
Thank you, Madam Chair and colleagues, I support this motion, and I discovered in the news that I'm a member of the board of EDIC. I've never been informed of any board meetings or any of the activities of EDIC, and that may be the case with many of my colleagues. I think it was established for a legitimate reason to help the movie industry, but somehow it has got on the wrong track, as we see the DA with his investigation, search warrants, et cetera. So I strongly support this, and there needs to be, if we're members of a Board of Directors, obviously, information, meetings, minutes, et cetera. I don't know of anything that has been disseminated to us, yet we sit as members of the Board of Directors of this entity, which is now under criminal parole by the District Attorney's Office. So the issues are very real, there's a great concern, and not only the issue of the movie industry and keeping productions here in Los Angeles, but how it looks upon us as elected officials and also members of the county board supervisors, and hopefully this will generate a better relationship with us and the county board in managing and organizing and giving approvals when expenditures are made and the appropriateness of those expenditures from EDIC funds.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Pacheco, you know, I think you said a little earlier, I was dreaming and sometimes dreams come true. That's the second time you've done that when you stood up, but, which is unnecessary, but that's all right. The fact of the matter is that, can you dream up the number of people who serve on the board right now? Or do you really know? If the council person, the board supervisor were removed, how many would be remaining? No, not approximate. I mean, you put the motion in, I didn't dream it up, you did.
Well, I mean, Mr. Holden, I believe that's why we're requesting a report in 30 days, it's not something to decide today. We want to be deliberative about this whole process, and that's why we're asking people to come back in 30 days. So in those 30 days, if you have some follow-up questions, we can include them, but I just want the ball.
I would just look at the station area, pick up the phone and call them. I drafted this motion.
I understand that, Mr. Holden.
So it may be left unrepresented.
We may be left unrepresented, and that might be the appropriate decision on this issue.
They could end up with no board at all, which means that you have to deactivate the organization possibly.
We may, that may be the appropriate solution to this quandary, but in 30 days we'll get a more intelligent report from the CLA, CAO, and the Controller's Office, and that's what the request is to.
I know, but as you present this to the council, I would have liked to have had you say, here's why they were put on in the first place, and why the board of supervisors were put on, and why we needed the EIDC in the first place, because we're losing the business from the area, and now we have, you know.
Mr. Holden, I don't think there's anything definitive in this motion, other than to have a report back, have the investigation to determine whether or not changes should be made.
I'm not directing that to the chair, and the chair wants to speak as a position over there for you.
I think you raise some very good questions and background, but I think one of the things that we have to look at today is how it's being implemented versus what was conceived. I mean, we know that there are certain ideas that were brought about in terms of how to maintain our film industry here in Los Angeles.
Good.
And now, we are just asking for a report back in terms of the appropriate relationships with this, with the expediting of the permits. I personally, my own personal opinion is that EIDC does a good job of working with the film industry, but there are some questions that have to be answered.
Our time is running, I just want to say briefly, with my understanding, I think Ms. Skowski is here, that this emanated out of the mayor's office, Dick Riordan, at the time, and they wanted to show the industry that we wanted to keep them here. And so they kind of, they cut a deal with the kind of board of supervisors where you can one permit stop, and they expedited. So it's a make-believe industry, you know, phony as the motion picture industry is, and they do things a lot differently, and it's all make-believe, and what you think it is, it isn't. And if they do a good job at deceiving you, then it's a good movie. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Madam President. Just FYI, Mr. Holden, if the council members were to be off the committee, we'd have, I think, over 35 people on it, including Ron Deaton and some other actors and photographers and folks like that. Not implying that Ron is one of those, of course. Mr. Pacheco, I'm not going to comment on what's going on right now because it's an ongoing investigation, except to say, suffice it to say that there's no, or I'm as strong an advocate as anybody in terms of wanting to make sure we have oversight and that those questions or answers that have been raised. I do have a question and would offer as a friendly amendment with the last paragraph, the further move, the alleged behavior that's gone on at EIDC, whether or not it is, whether it crosses a line or not, I think the activity of the permitting and the promotion of Los Angeles as a film center has been excellent from EIDC, and that needs to be stated. I don't want to be undercutting them while these facts are true. I want a report back as to whether or not we should recommend, if that can be part of the 30-day report back. For us today, because of what's going on in a separate part of their business, to recommend immediately that that have to be on their, each permit, I think, or on each of their applications, is a secondary element that I'd like to either have before my committee or at least to have some time to chew over. But if you would be amenable to saying that could be part of the report back in 30 days, I think because that part of their business has not been questioned, whether or not they're good, and we have made that investment, it would be like doing Rule 23 at LACVB today, saying, okay, we're going to take away, ask them to change something today without ever having a chance to talk or deliberate or part of a larger strategy. I think it would be much more appropriate for us to make that part of the report. I don't want to cut off the business model as we're looking at things that have to do with perhaps individuals, and that's what that last paragraph seems to do without any deliberation. So would you be open to that as a friendly amendment, to say that we get, as part of the report back, whether or not we should immediately move on doing that, or advising that to them?
Well, at the end of the day, it's a request, and I believe we can ask for them to come into committee even sooner, if you want to chew on just that last part, if you want to have them at your next committee meeting, I would prefer that. That it should be a request, and then we can ask them to come forward to your committee, and if there's a reason to alter that request from immediate to something in the future, then we can deal with that in committee, so.
I want to praise your work on this, and I do want to move forward on this today, and I think you've done something very important, but I'm not prepared necessarily for that to be a recommendation of my own yet, because I don't know if I'd settle on that as a recommendation, whether that makes good business sense for the city to be doing that yet. It doesn't affect any of the other items and questions, the stuff that's been in the newspaper, the stuff possibly under investigation. So it's actually the substance of it, you're right, they could come back and say, no, but I don't want to put them in the position of saying, this is now what this body thinks you should do, tell us why we shouldn't, because I, as one member of this body, don't necessarily think yet, I may be there, but I just need some time, and I would think all of us would need some time, need to reflect on whether that is a recommendation I want to make.
All right, then, I believed in the, if we want to tweak that last paragraph, Madam President and Mr. Garcetti, that I believe that we should then request that EIDC come to your committee. Could you have that within the next week or two?
Yeah, I mean, we could have them come, I think we have, in two weeks, we're going to have a committee, yeah.
In two weeks, come to the next committee to discuss implementing procedures such as, such as what's recommended here.
Possible implementation of procedures such as, okay, that's fine, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair now recognizes Ms. Gruel.
I similarly agree with many of the comments made by my colleague, Councilmember Garcetti, and, you know, believe as I'm someone who's come from the entertainment industry, understand the importance of this industry in Los Angeles and the goals and mission of the EIDC to make sure that we do have production and so forth. There have been some serious concerns raised by the district attorney and have the same concerns that many of you do, to make sure that there is a thorough investigation about these issues, and feel that this motion allows the city, who has obviously an interest in this issue, to participate in that dialogue and discussion and to ensure that our constituents and others know that funds being utilized by our EIDC are in fact being utilized for the purposes in which we had created this organization. As I think Mr. Holden mentioned, it was created under Mayor Riordan, where they combined the city and the county to streamline, which was one of the original goals. And I think the issues relative to political contributions should be an issue that is being discussed, and support Councilmember Garcetti's amendment as well to make sure that we have a full discussion before implementing those particular recommendations. So I think that, you know, we must continue to attract job creation and production here in the city of Los Angeles and restore confidence in our organization by having this review and participating in that process.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. We all want to know what we're doing with our departments and how they're affecting our economy. But I also would hope that we don't overreact to press headlines and put things in the context. When the film industry was leaving the Canada, we were looking at ways in which we can contain assets that are natural to Los Angeles, and the movie industry is a natural asset. It goes back since the city started the movie industry, and movie industry started the city. But the truth is, EIDC has also been very creative. They took Old City Jail, which has been basically an eyesore and a white elephant, and converted it into movie sets, and using those resources to improve a city facility and create jobs and to improve a neighborhood that had been neglected. So we should also highlight that which is positive, understanding that DA has to do its investigation, we don't know what really happened, and that's why we have that process on track. But hopefully we don't get into this bandwagon that, you know, let's crucify them and let's, you know, throw a lot of dirt at it, when we don't really understand what's really happening. And it acknowledges the fact that we are retaining jobs, we do have an industry that's very important to this economy, and let's be balanced about how we approach this issue. So I just wanted to share those thoughts with you, because we should be careful in how we influence the process of business if we are not familiar with that process ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. The chair recognizes Mr. Holden for a second time.
And I'm going to vote no. I'm going to vote no because I think that I consider this to be interfering with the ongoing investigation. And if it were not that situation developing, this motion, in my view, would not be before us. And so I would be willing to wait and see what evolves, what comes out of it, because as was already stated, this organization's done a good job in terms of retaining that business here and creating more jobs for the motion picture industry. We're losing it to Canada and other states, et cetera. Now, if they did something wrong, you know, that'll come out in the wash. To cross the line, then we'll know about that. But the fact of the matter is that to do it this way, I think is wrong. If you want to say the city attorney should get involved and review some of the findings of the district attorney and come back to the city council for suggestions or recommendations at some later date, once they have all the information that's been discovered and disclosed, that's one thing. But to jump the gun and preempt, in a way, not, I'm not saying that's the attempt, but in the fact that's what's going to happen. You tend to preempt the investigation of the district attorney, to have information revealed in a public setting by EIDC, is the, what they, how they conduct their business, I don't like that. And I like that the organization and its performance, the success of it, as I already talked about, Mr. Garcetti should stand on his own. And for that reason, in all due respect, I'm going to vote no. I consider to be interfering with the investigation, ongoing investigation, and for that reason, I'm voting no.
Mr. Pacheco.
Madam President and colleagues, I definitely respect Mr. Holden's viewpoint from the standpoint that, as a former prosecutor, sometimes the best thing is to leave things alone. And I was simply, I just want you to know that it was actually Mr. Cooley himself who publicly requested that we get involved and begin to implement structural changes. So I hope I'm being consistent with the district attorney's office by getting the ball rolling here, but I do understand and I respect where Mr. Holden's coming from, and it's not our intention in any way to undermine the criminal investigation by Mr. Cooley. It was simply that when Mr. Cooley asked us publicly or made public statements that he wanted local elected officials to proactively look into this, I thought we were in compliance by introducing this motion today. I still believe that the motion is really one that is directed at making sure that everyone understands the relationships that are involved here. EIDC is not a government agency, they are a contractee, they contract with the city of Los Angeles, and we need to just make clear what the relationship is. And I would like the CAO, CLA, and Controller to assist us in that direction, and maybe And maybe Mr. Holden is correct, that the city attorney should also give us input, so if no one objects, I would simply amend my own motion to include that the city attorney worked with us in 30 days and come back and report on this matter. But other than that, I do understand where Mr. Holden is coming from. I would just simply encourage that he vote. Hopefully I've clarified things a little better, and he would support the motion.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Design for a second time.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I don't want to prolong the debate on this, but I think it's incumbent upon us, since we are members of that board, which I was unaware of, and never attended any board meetings, and never received any information, that it's incumbent upon us to take a proactive approach. It's not like an outside entity. We are part of that entity when it was established in 1995, or whenever it was established, I think it was 1995, along with members of the board supervisor. So I think it's incumbent upon us to be a proactive approach, not sit idly by as more things occur, and then we're negligent, and not assuming responsibility and control and accountability of something that we've been assigned to as members of the Board of EDIC. Clearly, somehow, we've been established as board members. I don't know how many meetings you've attended, Mr. Holden. I never even knew we were members of the Board, leave alone attending any meetings. I think we need to flush this out for our own survival, as well as the preservation of the movie industry, and to keep it clean, to keep it honest, keep it above board. So Councilmember Checo, I support it, and it needs to be all flushed out and examined with the public scrutiny as the DA conducts his investigation.
Thank you, Mr. Design. There's no other requests to speak, so the motion as brought forward on special is before us.
Madam President, there are two friendly amendments so far. The first one is brought forward by the mover of the motion, and that is to also include the city attorney, along with the CLA and CAO Controller, to give input. And the second one was by Mr. Garcetti to request the EIDC to report to the ED and E Committee relative to those four items in the last paragraph.
All right, those two amendments will be considered part of the motion. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, one no.
That matter is approved. Thank you. A forthwith on that as well. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Perry.
Thank you very much. I would like to ask for reconsideration on item 81, so that I can provide a technical amendment.
Members, we have item 81 that is being requested for reconsideration. If there's no objection, please open the roll on that. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That matter is now before us.
Thank you very much. Mayor's office has asked me to do a technical amendment to change the recommendation to authorize the mayor, not the Board of Public Works, to immediately execute a quit claim deed on this matter.
All right, that is a technical amendment to allow the mayor to act. There's no one requesting to speak. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That matter is approved. What is before us, Mr. Clerk?
Now you have closed session items and public comment. Do you wish to hear public comment at this time?
Yes, we have one card submitted on public comment. Let me call forward Mr. Ted Hayes at this time.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Hayes.
Ninety-five, ninety-six, forthwith. Thank you very much.
Forthwith on ninety-five and ninety-six, the action's taken. Mr. Hayes?
Thank you. Good morning, Madam President, members of the city council, Jan. Everybody else is here. I'm here today because on everybody's mind is September 11th what happened one year ago tomorrow. At this time last year, I was in London, England, with my cricket team, along with my partner and that Katie Hayward, the film producer. As you know, my cricket team are made up of young men from Compton, former gang members, would-be gang members, homeless men, and some volunteers. We had just finished our tour, we had played our last game, we scored the flyer home today, and then the situation happened, where the attack upon our country. We felt isolated, outside the country, locked out, and I felt that I had to do something in response to that, so we grabbed our American flag that we had been carrying all through England, playing on our cricket matches. And the boys and I went out with the flag, and we stood in Trafalgar Square. We were probably the first group in England, in London, even about the same time with the embassy, to come out and make a stand for our country. I know there's a lot of things about our country that needs to be fixed, and, but at the same time, though, I feel that we need to defend our country, so I stood there. We got a lot of ugly looks that day from certain people, but most of it was positive. However, in keeping with that tradition, we're going to do tomorrow what we call a sunrise vigil on the corner of Main and First Street. And we want to draw attention to what happened that day. We're going to do a guerrilla theater, reenacting what happened on that day. It will start at 5:56 a.m., just about the time that the first plane struck the World Trade Towers. And we're inviting you, if you're up that time in the morning, if you have nothing else to do, if you want to make the first statement, to come out that morning and join us on First and Spring Street. Tonight, we're going to start our program with a vigil beginning at 6 o'clock. We'll be there all night with our candles, singing songs, victory, talking about the issues. Then tonight on my radio show, we're having a vigil from 12 to 1 o'clock. Tomorrow, after we do our vigil, we're going to walk down to Little Tokyo, to the Soldier's Memorial there. The reason why we're doing that is 50 years ago, when the United States was attacked by the Japanese Imperial Army in Hawaii, the United States rounded up Japanese-American citizens and put them in concentration camps. It was a terrible thing to have happened. But in response to that, young Japanese men, to show the Japanese-American community solidarity with this country, they went and joined the military, ready to fight whoever, the Japanese or the Germans, and they did so, and thousands of them gave their lives. I've said to my Muslim brothers, in the last, within last year, we have not seen too much by way of support from your community for our country. We've seen more criticisms about our country, criticism about allied Israel. We have not seen you take to the streets. I've asked them on numerous occasions to at least take American flags by the thousands and walk in the streets of America, and let the American citizens know that you are with us. Gratefully, last year, April 21st, some of you supported the 1,000 student march in Homesteads, was predominantly led by Islamic students. However, I said to my good friend Omar Ritchie, you've got to do more. So we're going to go down tomorrow, we're going to commemorate our lost brothers last year by acknowledging what the Japanese soldiers did in this particular time, and we're calling our Islamic brothers to not hide behind TV cameras and radio and printed material, but to come and put their bodies on the line with the rest of us in this country in order to make this a better country. So anyway, I just wanted to let you know that we're doing this, and I want to invite you all to come out if you're up in the morning. And God bless you guys. Thank you for all the good, hard work that you're doing, and see you around. Jan.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. That concludes public comment. Mr. Clerk?
Now it's time for closed session, item number 94.
All right, the clerk and the sound people could now prepare the council chambers for closed session. Members of the public need to make their exit, yes, Mr. Clerk?
Would you like to do the housekeeping at this time?
Yes, let's do the housekeeping items.
motions for posting referral?
They are posted.
Councilmembers request for an excuse at council. Councilmember Burnson requests a excuse on Tuesday, September 24th, for city business. This meets policy.
Mr. Burnson is excused on the 24th?
Councilmember Gruel requests a excuse September 24th to leave early. This also meets policy.
Councilmember Gruel is excused.
Councilmember Hahn requests a excuse on September 24th and 25th for city business. September 25th, a motion is required.
Ms. Perry moves. Mr. LeBarn seconds. That matter is approved.
Councilmember Hahn requests a excuse on October 9th, to leave at 11:45, which meets policy.
Ms. Hahn is excused to leave late on the 9th.
And Councilmember Ridley Thomas requests to be excused on September 13th, to leave at noon on September 17th, for the entire day. This is city business, and it meets policy.
Mr. Ridley Thomas is excused on those dates.
The only item before you right now is item number 94.
All right, we have closed session matter. The Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
I just want the public to know that you're doing an excellent job chairing the meeting today.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. All right. Are we closed? Not yet. Rebecca? Okay, council is back in session. Mr. Clerk, would you please bring the matters forward?
Yes, out of closed session, 94E, there's a request to continue that matter until Friday, the 13th.
That matter is continued without objection?
Item 94A, authorize city attorney to settle case for $184,000.
That matter is before, why don't you read 94B and C at the same time, since they relate to the same settlement case?
B is authorize city attorney to expend $197,000, and C is to authorize city attorney to expend $192,500.
Members, items 94A, B and C are before us. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. That matter is approved.
Do you wish those go forthwith?
Those will go forthwith.
Okay, and item number 94D, a request from the city attorney to authorize the expenditure of $120,000 in settlement of case.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That matter is approved, and will also be sent forthwith.
The desk is clear.
Members, the desk is cleared. Do we have, during motion, I have one, I would like to have all members stand. All right, announcements first? Mr. Reyes?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to announce, yesterday we had a press conference for $25,000 reward, given the murder of Mr. Cheyan, which happened in my district, Officer Talon Main Street, and the ALI PD, the detectives, are asking for anyone to step up, so I want to let the viewing audience know that we need your help. Mr. Cheyan was shot nine months ago, they have no leads, and they need assistance, and I'm hoping that someone can step up. It's a $25,000 reward, any detail we can give, and I'm sorry to have the number to the detective, if you can call ALI PD with any information, we truly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Announcement, Mr. Design?
Yeah, I just want to remind our viewers about the commemoration tomorrow at 5:30 a.m. at North Hollywood Park. I think that's in your district, Wendy?
That's in Tom's district.
Tom's district? 5:30 a.m.
It's in the city of Los Angeles. I'm happy to represent the fourth district. I don't own any district.
11430 Chandler Boulevard, that's where the procession begins at 5:30 in the morning, and the people in the West San Fernando Valley, it will be at Warner Center Park at 8 a.m., and after that, it will be at Fire Station 88 at 5101 Sepulveda, 9 a.m. And the procession will then continue to City Hall, 11:25 a.m. And from there, it goes to the Cathedral at 12:25, that's 555 West Temple Street. From there, it will go to Alvera Street at 12:45, the Fire Station Museum. It then goes to, at 2 o'clock, 2724 Caesar Chavez. At 3 o'clock, it'll be at the Coliseum. And at 5:30, it will be at the Korean Bell, Angels Gate Park, Gaffey and 37th Street in the 15th District. The ceremony will continue throughout the day, and I know we will be in recess tomorrow.
Right, can I just?
Yes, Ms. Hahn.
Let me just add two things to that. There's another memorial service tomorrow morning in the harbor area at Station 112, that's our fire department station on the water, which will begin at 6:30 a.m. And the one in the evening at the Korean Bell, we're starting it actually at 5:15, as the President is going live on the air at 6 p.m. our time. So we want to make sure that our service is completed by that, so those who would like to listen to the President may. And I would like to request at Channel 35, if it's possible, when you replay our city council meeting tonight, that possibly at the end of our meeting, we list all the locations of the all-day memorial remembrances in Los Angeles, so that viewers can see them for themselves one more time tonight on TV.
And there's a number of religious ceremonies tomorrow, services. I know that at St. Bernard's and Temple Aliyah on Valley Circle, they're having a joint service at 7 p.m. And there's a number of services citywide, where a number of churches, temples, synagogues are gathering for the commemoration. And the local papers are listing it. We're going to be doing it from our perspective here at City Hall. Channel 35 needs to publish that, along with our local media.
Thank you, Mr. Design. Other announcements?
And just to add to what Mr. Design and Ms. Hahn spoke of about the 9/11, we started a tree planting program on Sunday for over 3,000 trees in Los Angeles. The Hollywood Beautification Team are organizing it in name and memory of all over the 3,000 people, and there'll be opportunities throughout your district to plant trees, and it's a great community program, the ongoing legacy of trees in memory of people who should be here today, but were not. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holden, do you have an announcement?
Yes, Madam President. Members, for tomorrow at the Wilshire Christian Church, Normandy, Wilshire, Normandy, there'll be a short march down Wilshire Boulevard to the church, starting at 11:30. The speaking will begin at 12 noon. For those who are in the area and who can't get downtown, they should go there or any other location that's been designated, where people will come together to memorialize and to remember those individuals who lost their life during this attack on our country. I just wanted to say once again that this is an attack upon the United States of America, shocked all of us, not just here at home, but around the world. For those of us who had military experience, just felt like putting our uniform on again and trying to hunt down the enemy, the ones who are responsible for this act. They, all the Americans, came together. It was one time that I was reassured that those who wear baggy pants and those who wear long hair had the same message, we will defend our land, we defend freedom. And they demonstrated it. More American flags on every automobile. You may even see a blood sign and a crypt sign, or 18th Street, whatever the case may be, but they're all carrying the American flag, giving the same message. And we want those individuals to know that we appreciate their loyalty to America.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes, did you?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'm not sure how to find the right words for this. This heinous act that America suffered, many people did die, and we all suffered as a country. But I need to put this out there, and that is that in District 1 alone, we've had 30 homicides between January and July. In District 7, we've had 28. In District 8, we've had 76. In District 9, we've had 48. In District 10, we've had 27. In 14, we've had 31. In District 15, we have 37. In total, we've had 367 homicides between January and July in the city of LA. So in our prayers and our thoughts, these families, Angelenos are suffering and dying too. So we, let's consider the domestic terrorism that we need to challenge, and find ways to curb these acts of heinous crimes that we do suffer in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for an announcement.
One last announcement as well. At 7 o'clock this evening at the Gay and Lesbian Center in Hollywood, which is at 11:25 North McAden Place, we'll be having a ceremony as well honoring some of the gay and lesbian victims of 9/11, including an individual from the Southland who was on the plane in Pennsylvania, who was one of the group of folks that, of people who rushed the cockpit and saved the lives of many other Americans through their heroic actions. We'll have a candlelight vigil, and we invite all Angelenos to join with us. Sheriff Baca will be there as well, and we hope you can make it.
Thank you. I think it's now time to go into the tributes, and members, I think most everyone has heard already the very sad news this morning, that perhaps one of the brightest stars in Los Angeles constellation died this morning at 7 a.m., and that's Ira Yellen. I don't think there is something in this city that has a value that doesn't have Ira's imprint on it. I first met him in 1971, and I have in front of me, those of you who are familiar, something called the Mahalan Green Book, which is the imprint of How Mahalan Shall Be Guided. The letter of transmittal of the Citizens Advisory Committee that formed the Mahalan Green Book, here it is printed in green, was transmitted on September 1st, 1972, by Ira Yellen, who was the chairman of the Mahalan Citizens Advisory Committee, recognizing the skyline roadway along recognizing the skyline roadway along the crest of Santa Monica Mountains as a unique resource to the City of Los Angeles. And we thereafter enacted that. And since from that time, and that's dated 30 years ago, Ira has just given himself timelessly, as I just ran through in my own mind, not even bothering to do a lot of research. He, for three years, chaired and was president of the American Jewish Committee. We have on our shelf something called the Downtown Strategic Plan that Ira participated in. Even recently, he had been on the committee requested by Cardinal Mahoney to look for and help the Cardinal search for an appropriate architect for the cathedral that we just opened last week. Ira participated in that. We know of his work with the L.A. Conservancy, and early on, in the preservation of what was important to the fabric, the urban fabric of this city, looking to reconstitute, revitalize downtown, and his work in saving and buying the Bradbury Building and the areas on Broadway, restarting, recharging the miracle on Broadway. Ira had his hand in that. He has most recently served on the Board of Directors of the Getty Museum. Prior to that, he was on the Board of Overseers of Hebrew Union College, and on the Board of Directors of the Skirball Cultural Center. As I said, there isn't, and even as a resident of CD11 at his home, and I think many of us have been there because it was always open for any kind of public event, any kind of discussion of new ideas throughout the city, throughout the state, throughout the region, Ira's house was open. But on 4th of July, it was open to his neighborhood, and he had a carnival there for all the kids in the neighborhood to come and have the popcorn and the hot dogs and the clowns. So from every event, from his local neighborhood to his country. He served in the Marines. He, as I say, there's just not any part of something that I think we value in this city and in this country that Ira wasn't a part of. He is survived by his wife Adele, his two loving children, Jessica and Seth, his mother Dorothy, his brothers Albert and Mark. And he died at 62 years of age this morning. His service will be held on Thursday. For anyone who wants further information, you can call 213-621-0200. That's his office building downtown here at the Bradbury Building to get that information. But I'm sure all members will want to join in on that. Yes, Mr. Garcetti?
I, too, join very sorrowfully in the tribute to Ira. His daughter Jessica, especially, my thoughts go out to, who's a good friend of mine, and to Adele, his wife. I think you said it well, Madam President. He really, we often think and we're told that there's six degrees of separation between every human being. And there was a great article a couple of years ago that talked about how that's not true, that we actually rely on certain human hubs where there's only one or two degrees of separation, and we all go through these human beings' lives, and they connect us with each other. And I think that Ira was one of those individuals here, locally, nationally, the son of a rabbi, somebody who always kept thinking and learning and opened his home in that way and connected people. And his legacy is right here in this council. His legacy is throughout this city, through our own friendships and our own relationships, that he helped solidify, cement an introduction that he made. And this city is much, much poorer by his passing. May he rest in peace.
I just want to talk about Ira too, because of his impact on Los Angeles. And Eric, your words were beautiful. Zinni's, yours were super beautiful. And having that old report. When you look at someone like Ira Yellen, and then you find his name on an old report and realize all the meetings that he must have attended away from his family for the good of community. His work at Union Station was tremendous. And I always talked about, was there too many palm trees in the front of Union Station? And he told me how it was fitting for the whole redevelopment of Catalas at that time and his stage and his work there. I guess the greatest thing I would like to say about Ira Yellen is he truly was a city builder. And these are the people that we need, the pillars of our community, who have vision, who have energy, who have time, and who have love of people to do things now beyond his time. Because his impact in Broadway, his impact in downtown, his impact throughout Los Angeles will be lost, but his impact will stand tall. God rest his memory and bless his memory, and also, God bless his family, which I know has had a very difficult time in this challenge that he fought for over a year. And may he rest in peace.
Thank you. Chair, Ms. Skrill.
I just want to echo all of the comments that have been made, and Ira's impact on the City of Los Angeles will be felt for years. I remember I was working for Tom Bradley during the time when he worked on that Downtown Strategic Plan. And he dealt with everything from redeveloping buildings to helping rebuild lives on the homeless issue and so many others. And similarly, my thoughts go out to Adele and Jessica, who I know as well. And we were talking this morning about how you just hoped there would have been a miracle to keep him with us to continue to give to our city. But we know that he lives on in so many of our hearts.
Ms. Han?
I just want to also express my condolences to the family, and particularly to Adele, who I became very close to as long with you in the Women's Political Committee. And again, besides all the great footprints that Ira has in and around this city, he clearly, he and Adele both, when they believed in the message of an individual, when they believed that certain people should be elected to office, they opened up their home. And they certainly opened up their checkbooks to really support people who they believed in. And it wasn't just local people running for office. I attended many times at their home, people from the rest of the country, who were running for Senator or Congress from another state, would actually come here. And if Adele and Ira believed in what they would be able to do for our country, they certainly opened up their home to support them. So we will really miss him. But his clearly is one of those lives that will forever live on. And when you look at the history of Los Angeles, Ira Yellen will be on the front page of that history book.
Thank you. Mr. Holden, did you want to speak?
I would just like to reiterate that Ira worked very closely with me, even though his projects was not in my district, but as a chair of the Transportation Committee at the time, which addressed some of the issues in his concern. He always gave up more than he received, and that he gave his time, resources, and monies to those projects, and did not always ask for benefits, as we now are seeing when projects are being offered for development. He's a good guy, and all for the good of the city. We don't have people, not enough, like Ira Yellen, who come around once in many, many moons. He extended his hand of opportunity and helped for many, for those who would not otherwise be reached. He'll be missed, for sure.
Mr. Patekko?
Colleagues, when I first got into council, Ira Yellen was one of those individuals who sat me down and talked about Broadway and everything going on downtown, and how Councilmember Alatorre and Bonnie Brody had been working so passionately with him and his vision of what should happen along the Broadway corridor, whether you talk about Grand Central Market or the Bradbury Building, or also the Union Station, the development there with Catalas. So he really impressed upon me how I had some big shoes to fill with the tradition that Bonnie Brody and Councilmember Alatorre had put into downtown. And I told him that I would work with him closely and all the other advocates and stakeholders and our partner in CD9. At that time, it was Ms. Walters and now Ms. Perry, to make sure that downtown is for everybody. And I believe he really wanted to see a downtown that everyone enjoyed and shared and made this great city where it is.
Chair, Jim Ratchell.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Madam President. For me, Ira was a friend. In my tenures working with the council, he was the one person who talked about mixed use. He talked about a sense of place for people. And he was not afraid to go into what others might consider undesirable places. And he saw value in history. He saw value in people and in architecture. He worked with me on the MacArthur Park site. He was working hard on putting together some great projects along the previous Blue Line now Gold Line. And his tenacity, his wherewithal was a great asset for me as an individual. He taught me a lot. And through him, I understood just how strong we can be as a United City, because he talked about the strengths of this city. And like the words he shared with us, Madam President, in that report, it was that same kind of focus he had in the charrettes in the late 80s, early 90s in the city. And he never, never failed to see the importance of people, and I will always cherish that.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, those are beautiful tributes that you've all given today to a really beautiful man. And what I think about is that when you walk around Los Angeles and you see a beautiful old building, it's very possible that you're seeing Ira. When you see a beautiful new building, you may be seeing him. When you see a beautiful work of art, you may be seeing Ira. But also, let's not forget that there are hundreds, there might be thousands of people in this city whom he counseled and mentored and advised and encouraged over the years in all walks of life. And in a small way, I'd like to think I'm one of them, but knowing that someone of his stature, of his dignity, of his humanity, cared about you and thought you were on the right track was an incredibly empowering experience for so many people in this city. So let us not just remember Ira Yellen as a builder of the infrastructure of this city, but let's recognize him as well as someone who meant so much personally to the lives of so many of us.
Thank you. Are there any other tributes? Yes.
Madam President, members, it's clear to each of us, including the public, that the members who are present, for the most part, did comment, for one exception. I think it should be noted that Ms. Jan Perry, whose district in which Ira did a lot of business, did a lot of good, helped a lot of people, is so emotionally taken by the notification of his passing. In fact, shared it with me this morning, where she just feels that she cannot make any comment at all with the fear that emotional breakdown here. She worked with him when she was on Rita Walter's staff in helping solve many of the problems. She's worked with him and his wife Adele since she's been the councilperson. And feels very, very close to Ira Yellen. I would even go as far to say that she views him as a member of her family. And for that reason, she is not responding today. But her heart goes out to the family, to the City of Los Angeles, for the loss of Ira Yellen. And we want to thank Ms. Perry for her relationship, her association, and her participation with Ira Yellen, for all they were able to do together for the people of this city, not just of that district.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Madam President. I have three tributes for Mr. Burnson. First, Leo Rikers, born January 12, 1920. He was 82 years old and passed away on August 31, 2002. Originally from Platteville, Wisconsin. He was the father of YMCA Regional Director Jane Stanton of Granada Hills Residence, married to his wife Lorraine for 59 years. Originally a farmer, dairy farming, and transitioned to beef cattle farming. Loved being a farmer. Kept his nose to the grindstone, as does his daughter Jane. He survived by Lorraine, his wife, for 59 years, his daughter Karen Oba, and his grandson Travis, son Richard, grandchildren Jason, Scott, Angela, former daughter-in-law Joanne Rikers, mother of Jason, Scott, Angela, son Douglas, and many grandchildren, as well as numerous nieces and nephews. Secondly, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Robert Bob Haas, passed away on August 30, 2002. Resident of Northridge, Bob was married to Susan for 33 years and passed away at the too-early age of 57 years old. Bob did his undergraduate work at CSUN, graduated from the USC School of Dentistry, and received his degree as a periodontist from New York University. He had a dental practice in Encino. He is survived by his mother Toby, wife Susan, sons Aaron Jeff and daughter Meredith, brother Bert, wife Carol, nieces Faith Shannon, and nephew Jonathan. Third, on behalf of Councilman Burnson, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Helen Giuliani, who was mother to Rudy Giuliani, the former mayor of New York. Helen Giuliani was 92. She died on Sunday at Mount Sinai Medical Center with her son and other family at her side, and had been in poor health for about 18 months. She took a very active role in her son's political career and was often found out on the campaign trail with him. Not only did she produce a son who's been a great leader for this country, but also, her own work made her such a leader as well. Lastly, on my own behalf, I ask if we all adjourn in memory of Jim Miranda, longtime resident of CD13 who died from complications due to AIDS. He's a great florist, who many in City Hall probably used over the years his shop Concrete Jungle. He is survived by his life partner, Martin Zimmerin, a senior official with the county's Chief Administrative Office. May he rest in peace.
Thank you. Ms. Skrill?
Yes, I know all of us read in the paper recently about the death of Larry Green, someone who for 24 years was a cameraman for CBS while he was on assignment in Bahrain. And last week, he was getting arrow shots when the helicopter went down. I had the pleasure of knowing him when I worked for Tom Bradley. He was a positive, compassionate individual who really touched everyone he met. He was known for his magic tricks and practical jokes. And when he used to come to press conferences with the mayor, he would bring Jujubes, which were something that Tom Bradley liked very much. And so for many years, those of us know him. He covered Los Angeles and covered City Hall, and he will be sorely missed. He is survived by his wife Diana Green, his sons Clayton, 13, and Connor, 9, years old. And the media is really an important part of our city and oftentimes sends the message to so many of our constituents about what's happening. And we forget that they also are at risk in many of the things that they do. And so I would like us to adjourn in memory of Larry Green.
Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Zine?
I have a adjournment motion for Larry also. And I knew Larry from my many years with the LAPD. And Larry was the cameraman on the scene of many incidents, always the bright smile, the friendly greeting. He loved police officers. He loved journalists, and he loved being the cameraman. And when I heard of his tragic death covering the special over in Afghanistan on the helicopter, that was Larry, an adventurer. He loved adventure. He loved that passion for taking what he saw, He loved that passion for taking what he saw, putting it on the tape, and having it broadcast to the viewers of Southern California who'll be sorely missed. He was a friend of many, many police officers, a friend of many people in Los Angeles. He was the man behind the camera who brought forth many, many of those wonderful moments in Los Angeles history, over his 24-year history with KCBS. He'll be sorely missed. May he rest in peace. And I know his family at CBS and KCAL are also going to miss him, along with his colleagues in journalism. But I also had a tribute, so I'd like to join in and tribute to Larry Green. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to add just in that too, if I could. Anybody who has been around here have run into many cameramen and who work for the reporters. And I remember in the early days, and Cindy, you remember this, because we started here when we were just at high school, they used to have two, you know, they had a sound man and a film editor. And they could only film until 1 o'clock, because then they had to process the film and get out of here. So it was never covered there. But Larry Green and his contribution, and you think about it, because we know a lot of these cameramen, and they were all, I've seen a lot of them lately, doing some activities in the community, and they're all shocked about it. But he was such a positive, not just for his own environment of Channel 2, but the cameraman telling me, how about all of them, as Wendy just mentioned, when there was a press conference and how he would kind of break the ice for everybody. But then you see the special challenge that they do in their business and go out and go into harm's way to bring back the news and information that's so important. I join in, all of us, and God bless his memory and rest his soul, and bless his family of young boys that he and his wife were raising. So God bless Larry Green.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn, did you have tribute? Okay, Mr. Holden?
Madam President, members, we have Samuel Mardea Hudson, even though the first name is Samuel. He was 89 years old at the time of her passing, an active member of Trinity Baptist Church. She was a member of the church choir for many years. Mardea, as she was affectionately called, raised three daughters, and when one of her children passed away, she raised her five children. Mrs. Hudson was a board-certified cosmetologist in three states, including California. She was much-loved and respected member of the community and the church. Services were held last month, survived by one daughter, several grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. Madam President, members, also, we adjourn in memory of Willie L. Atkins. He grew up in Los Angeles, attended Nevers Elementary School, and graduated from Jefferson High School in 1939. Mr. Atkins was an accomplished musician who toured with Paul Robeson for several years. In 1961, he retired from Douglas Aircraft Company, was an active member of the Second Baptist Church, and Prince Hall Mason. His services were held last week, survived by his wife Evelyn Marie Atkins, one stepdaughter, and several nieces and nephews. Miss President, members, I decided to announce also that Nicole Bednar, passed September 3, she was 62 years old at the time of her death. She's a Realtor in Lockenyard of Flint Ridge for Dale Beck Realty, longtime resident of Lockenyard of Flint Ridge, involved in charitable organization, a member of the Christian Assembly Church in Inglewood, survived by her husband Tom, two children, son Kurt and Michelle, and two grandchildren. The services were held last Saturday, 7. I might add, Madam President, members, that Michelle Bednar married a dear friend of mine, Tom, whom I worked with at Electro-Optical Systems in 1958, in the engineering department, working on the iron engine for long space durations. And he worked for me, I set up that department. And came in there with long hair and liked jazz, and I really liked him. And in fact, I changed his name from Bednar to Bednaski. And his wife really liked the new name I gave him to her husband. But they were just great people, that you would always know that you met or find family if you ever met them. And she will be missed for sure. Everybody who knew her loved her. I talked to Tom the other day, and he said, my wife was, of course, leaving us, in the hospital, on the hospital bed. And the nurses would come to her and say, can I help you? And she would say, oh no, I'm okay. Go help someone else who needs to help. Can you imagine that? And that's what Nicole, we call her Nikki, would have to say. So, Miss President, members, that's a loss for us all.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, we lost an extraordinary and unique person last week in Los Angeles in Marlene Adler Marks. She was someone who was known to hundreds of friends and admirers. Her service yesterday, the crowd was overflowing. But she was known to thousands and thousands of people through her column in the Jewish Journal, which was entitled "A Woman's Voice." And it was different than other columns, because when you read her column, you felt, and it was true, that you knew her, and that she knew you, and that she was talking directly to you and about you, and about things that you wished you could put into words, thoughts maybe that you had, but she could just, she could just do it better, and do it in a way that brought, for many of us, sort of the boring, old ethical precepts of Judaism into relief, into real life. The editor-in-chief of the Jewish Journal refers to what Marlene wrote about as "applied Judaism," and that's really a good summation of what she did. In the last several years, in the last